Call to order. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Everybody stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, visible with liberty and justice. Francisco announcement of the sunshine?
Yes, in accordance with the open public's meeting up, notice has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk. We have notices to be marked.
Okay, that will be B one for tonight in evidence. The notices.
Francisco roll call.
Okay, I see Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Patel. Commissioners Ablicki. Commissioner Sadeen. Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
And Vice Chair Aru.
Here.
We have a total of six.
Can we swear in this stuff?
And there you go. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you will give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Francisco, do we have any correspondence?
Let me show my screen. So I did notice there is a small typo in the agenda. There are two eight, two item eights.
Hmm, okay.
Um, so the cases that will be adjourning tonight are, give me one second. So we're gonna start at, on my agenda, it's item fourteen, but I'll go case and also by the address. So the case is Z twenty, Z twenty-two dash one zero seven. The address is sixty-eight Wayne Street. They have requested to carry to the November ninth regular meeting with preservation of notice. We have item sixteen, this is case Z twenty-two dash ten. The address is thirty-four, three forty-four Randolph. They have also requested to carry to November ninth with preservation of notice. We have item eighteen, this is case Z twenty dash one oh two. The address is one twenty-nine London Avenue. Again, they have requested to carry to November ninth with preservation of notice. And the last two items have also requested to carry to November ninth with with preservation of notice. The first one is case Z twenty twenty-three dash zeros sixteen. The address is three oh nine Chapewav. And the last case is case Z twenty-one dash zero seven four. The address is two thirty-eight to two forty-seven street. And this one has requested to carry to November ninth and they will be noticing. All other items are moving forward tonight.
Any Germans?
Those were.
New business? That's it?
Yes, so we're moving forward with everything else. Again, that's item fourteen, item sixteen, item eighteen, item nineteen, and item twenty.
Okay, all right, so let's start with item eight. Z twenty twenty-three zero 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 six. This is a three-year extension of the final major site plan with a C and D variance. Uh, and this is um, two twenty-seven Summit Avenue. And they're requesting a three-year extension and approval.
I don't see.
So you have Tom Lean or somebody from his firm, Connell Foley?
I see him. Promoting Tom Lean.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Tom Lean from Connell Foley. Um, while this is an extension, there were obviously variances involved as we're in front of the zoning board. I did notice for the application and I did provide an affidavit. So I just wanted to make sure that Mr. La Paglia is in receipt and has had a chance to review.
Yes, Tom, I did receive them. I did review them. We have your affidavit, your proof of service, notice of publication, and Bridget will mark this as A one for this application.
All right, this will be A one in evidence for tonight's application.
Do we have anyone to promote, Tom, for this?
No, this is uh, this is an extension request. Um, it is for an approval that was granted by this board back in twenty nineteen, specifically on September twenty-sixth with the resolution being memorialized on October tw- uh, tenth of twenty nineteen. Uh, that means that the approval itself expired in twenty twenty-one. Uh, the reason we're asking for three years here is because essentially three years uh, from twenty twenty-one would put us into October of twenty twenty-four. Uh, the original approval just for the board's edification was a five-story building uh, which fronted on Orchard Street and stepped down to four, uh, fronting on Summit Avenue. Uh, it was nineteen units and nine parking spaces. It was located or is located in the R one district. Uh, the reason we're uh, asking for the extension is um, the the current buildings that sit on the property were occupied uh, with tenants um, through um, the the approval period and then obviously into COVID. Uh, trying to find um, uh, ways to relocate those tenants was exceedingly difficult during um, COVID. And obviously, they weren't able to uh, to move out and find new housing. Um, by the time my clients were able to get new housing or the tenants moved out uh, and they were able to uh, secure financing, obviously the approval had run its course at that point. Um, so my clients are ready to move forward. The way that they found out that it had expired is they actually went to go apply for permits. Uh, so this is really just um, bringing the uh, the the approval uh, up to date and allowing them to go in and put in for the uh, the the permits and uh, move forward with the project.
Okay. Would there be uh, anybody from the public on this? Francisco?
Do see one hand raised, promoting Joseph. And I do also want to recognize, uh, we have Commissioner Brown, so that uh, puts us to seven commissioners in total tonight.
Is this Mr. Haynes? Is that who we're looking for?
It's Mr. Sofeli. Vincent? Hi.
Yes, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good.
I, I just wanted to know, it's hard for me to tell on the Zoom. How many commissioners do we have?
We have seven now.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you, Vincent. Sorry.
Okay, so then no, no public on this, Francisco?
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, so I assume we should close the public.
All right.
Uh, any commissioners have to say anything on this?
Any questions?
Any questions? No.
Can we have a motion?
Uh, Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case Z two zero two three dash zero 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 six that's presented to the board this evening.
I second.
On a motion to approve, Commissioner Allen?
Uh, um, yes.
Yes.
Commissioners Ablicki?
Yes.
Commissioner Sadeen?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Brown? We can hear you.
We can hear you vaguely. Did you say yes? And we can't see you, Lenora. Do you have a video?
I didn't get the vote either.
Lenora, you muted yourself.
Yeah. Well, when Lenora strains that out, we actually don't need her vote to begin with. So who's the last commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, Francisco, why don't we leave it at six in favor, none opposed, and Lenora's having trouble connecting, but we don't need her vote. Lenora, can you hear us? And we can't see you, Lenora, so you have to put your video on.
Hello? All right, we just had a vote. We just have to say yes or no. All right.
Well, as I said, we we don't need her vote for this case. It's.
All right, so let's move on.
We can move on to the next case. Evening if uh, if uh, Lenora can't connect. What were you gonna say, Tom?
Uh, for, for, just for the purpose of the record, I'm going to to just mark in my uh, resolution that she was present but abstained.
That's fine. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to call the next case, Sonia?
Yes, sir. Next case. Uh, Z twenty-three zero sixteen. The Steve Varian Carol Sutton, three thirteen Barack Street. Asking for a variance for a max lot coverage and a max lot rear yard. Do we have um, Carolyn with us?
Notting Heather Kummer.
Heather Kumar is the attorney. Now, where's, where's Heather?
There is another hand raised.
Oh, there is an attorney, yes, Kumar.
Um, just to see if they have a question regarding the applications that are.
Hi, um, just waiting for the architect to be let in.
Who's the?
Russ Bodnar.
Russ?
Oh, there is. Okay, um, hi, my name is Heather Kummer. Um, I'm from attorney from Watershed Legal Group. Uh, I'm representing the applicant Caroline Sutton. For three one three, uh, Barrick Street, block twelve, eight oh eight, lot ten. And it's located in the historic district from the Van Morris, uh, Van Morris Park. We already, this is a project, hopefully, we're gonna make this super quick. It's an exist, pre-existing uh, brownstone property. It's an undersized lot. It's twenty by seventy-five feet lot, so it's completely undersized. We're trying to do a rear yard uh, deck and we're, we're trying to do a terrace and a deck. Right now, we already got approval on August um, fourteenth regarding the certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission. Right now, the variances we're asking for are two C variances, which are relief from maximum lot coverage and relief from maximum rear yard setback. That is completely due from a part from an undersized lot that's all pre-existing. I'm trying to make it short here right now. On that note, um, our architect, Russell Bodnar. Um, and oh, sorry, before I get down to it, uh, uh, Mr. La Paglia, did you?
Yes, you have your notices.
You have your notices?
You have your notices. We've, we have reviewed them. We have your notice. Your proof of service, your notice of publication. So Bridget, for this application, we'll mark it as A one.
Okay, this will be A one in evidence for tonight's application.
So to move it along a moment, Heather, you have Richard Bodnar here. He's your architect. He's been recognized as an expert before this board. I'm assuming his license is still active. So assuming that's the case, let's wear him in, Bridget, and we can go.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And state and spell your full name for the record.
Yes, my name is Russell. Last name is Bodnar, B O D N A R. Um, I reside at fifty-two Long Hill Road in Long Valley, New Jersey. And yes, my license is current and active.
We accept you as an expert, so go ahead.
Okay, just jump into share screen. Um, yeah, somebody has to give me the permission. It still says host disabled. Process, bring a screen.
Let me know if it works now.
Okay, though.
Oh, there it is.
All right, um, as you can see here, uh, this is our plans. Right here, uh, as you can see here, the plans for the 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 project were located between uh, Varick and Mercer Montgomery on Varick Street. Our lot is undersized, like previously stated. It's twenty by seventy-five, by seventy-five. The existing house is a four-story um, existing structure. There's a one-story masonry structure on the back of the house. And that is twenty-one feet four inches from the rear yard. We're proposing a covered uh, patio on top of the existing one-story masonry structure and a staircase that goes from down from that to the rear yard. Our rear yard will then be fifteen point three three feet and we're required to have thirty, but obviously we're already existing at twenty-one feet four inches. And we're proposing this little um, deck above, uh, above this existing one-story space that just is just on that, on that um, terrace itself. And as you can see, if we go down to the next plan, you'll see what we mean by that. We have the first floor plan, which is over here, and that's actually, this is the lower ground level plan. So this is actually above this space here existing, and we're just looking for these stairs to come down to the rear yard. So it's a little um, deck in the rear. Um, it was already a pre-approved already by Historic. And as you can see, here's what the existing rear looks like of the building now. Here's what we're gonna do in our new um, um, building book, putting a new door in here where the window was. This uh, set of railings here, which we're doing these glass railings here in the rear of the property, as well as coming down the stairs uh, to the rear yard property. We also have two side um, composite type uh, six-foot tall screens on each side. So when you're, when you're on this terrace, you're, you can't really look into your neighbor's yard as well. And we have the stair coming down, and this will look like this board-on-board system on the, on the, on the bottom here as well. And here's what the uh, original house is here. It's a brownstone, three thirteen Varick. This is the side picture from um, Montgomery. You can't, will not be able to see the deck from Montgomery. But on Mercer during the winter months, right in this location, you might be able to see it through these, through the other fences and through the uh, the bushes, but I don't believe you're really gonna see much in terms of that. And here's, like I said, here's a rear yard existing facade. That that terrace deck is gonna be sitting right here along the edge of this. Uh, down along the neighbor to the south of us, actually already has this exact condition, two houses away from us. And like I said, this stair is gonna be coming down right in this location here. It's a pretty simple project. Our lot coverage is going from eighty-two point six percent. When we're done with the stair and everything, we're gonna be eighty-three point one percent. So our, like I said, our biggest things is our lot coverage variance, which we're going from eighty-two point six to eighty-three point one. And our rear yard setback is gonna be fifteen point three three to the bottom of the staircase. That's gonna be located here. And our existing right now from our lot line to our rear, this rear part of the building is already twenty-one feet four inches. It's a pretty simple project. Um, I think that's really all I have to say on the project at this point.
Thank you, Russ. Um, just to re, undersized lot, usually uh, the criteria is twenty-five by a hundred here. We're dealing with the seventy-five depth of the lot, which is why we need these, this creates a hardship. Um, we need to have, we're seeking relief for the uh, maximum lot coverage as well as the rear and setback. We reviewed, also reviewed the notes regarding from the planner's report as well and saw the conditions. Uh, that's pretty much in our presentation.
Okay, anybody from the board have any questions?
No, seems pretty straightforward.
Yes.
Yeah.
Francisco, do we have anybody from the uh, public?
Yes, I do see one hand raised. I'm promoting them now. They have declined to be promoted, and that's the only hand that is being raised.
Okay, so we'll move to close the public. Uh, staff, anything to say?
Yes, so I will be very brief. Uh, my report was uploaded to the data portal, so I'll read off of that briefly. Um, the applicant saw and received approval from Historic Preservation Commission um, at its August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Um, staff recommends approval, provided that the applicant complies with all conditions imposed by the Historic Preservation Commission under its approval of H twenty-two dash four two zero. Um, with that said, staff does recommend approval with conditions.
Yeah, thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case Z two three dash zero one six as presented to the board this evening.
On a motion to approve with conditions, Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
You're on mute. Oh.
Povish?
You're still on mute.
Wouldn't you get little signs that say?
Yes. There you go.
Okay.
Is that a yes?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm having trouble with this um, sound, the speaker, I think.
Mm-hmm, no, no problem. We got your vote. Commissioners.
Yeah, Commissioners Ablicki, yes?
Commissioner Sadeen?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Brown. Lenora?
Lenora, you're on mute as well.
I think she's frozen too.
I know.
Lenora? Lenora? Lenora?
You're switching from mute to unmute.
Still having computer problems. Yeah. All right, can we move forward with six, Vinnie?
Yes, it's a C variance. Uh, there's no problem. Where, where are we up to?
I'm, I'm up. I, I, I vote yes. And that makes it.
Six in favor and none opposed, and Heather, you can mark uh, Lenora as maybe abstained.
Will do. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
You as well. Wish, maybe we should go to the other C variance while we're having these technical difficulties.
Okay, that would be number seventeen.
Yes.
Okay, so the next one is number seventeen. We're, we're forward on this one. It's a C variance. Uh, applicant is Erebeto Ramon, and it's one ninety-four Sherman Avenue. And the attorney is Benjamin uh, Wine. As choir.
Sherman, not Freeman? Okay.
Promoting Benjamin Wine.
Wine?
Yes, Freeman.
It is Freeman, okay.
Francisco, I didn't see uh, the notices for this application.
Yeah, I didn't get the notices for this application.
So we don't have your notices.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Benjamin Wine of Prime and Two Bell on behalf of the applicant. Can everybody hear me all right?
We can hear you. Can you hear us? We, we're just saying we don't have your notices.
Oh, I did not hear you say that. Um, we, uh, pull up. I definitely should have it. Yeah, have my affidavit package. Um, I can send it, but before we do that, I do want to confirm, um, my architect, despite many uh, back and forth, never confirmed that he was able to make it on tonight. So can I just take a look through the panelists to make sure that he, or attendees to make sure he is here?
Sure. Who is it?
So it's Robert Darden is the licensed architect and Carlos Garcia is uh, is the project designer who's going to be giving the testimony.
Francisco, do you see them?
Uh, I see a Robert. What was the last name, Ben?
Darden.
I don't, I see a Robert Waldron.
No, Robert Waldron is my architect for another project this evening.
No, I don't.
Different Robert, different architect. Okay. Yeah, I, I do see Sam, who is my project planner. I, I mean, it's a, it's a small application, but I, I, I probably would think the board would want to hear from the architect, and I just don't see him here. So with that in mind, would you be able to uh, to push this? I'm gonna continue to try to get a hold of him. He confirmed yesterday. Um, but uh, has not, not been in touch at all today.
Well, you have two options in my mind. You either can postpone the case tonight and carry your notices, or you can hang out and see if uh, see if the guy shows up.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the latter only because I'm here for two other matters anyways. So I'm gonna hope for that, if that's all right. I, I don't want to take up the board's time uh, at the, at the present moment.
We'll, we'll come back to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, no problem. So Sonia, I guess we'll go with case number nine, if hopefully.
And I need a D variance on that, okay.
Yeah, well, now we have, that's all the C variances, so now we have seven. You with us, Lenora?
Lenora? Lenora?
Yes. Doesn't seem like her uh.
Screen looks frozen.
Yeah.
Should we move on to number nine? Vinnie?
Uh, yeah, we might as well.
So let's move on to number nine, case Z twenty twenty-three, Z zero 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 three. Applicant is the Junto Club LLC. Um, the address is two ninety-two Barrow Street. And the attorney is Angelo, Angelo Sifeli Junior.
So I, I don't see the attorney in the attendees. Um, someone.
Well, he came on.
He was the attorney that asked how many commissioners were here before.
Yeah, different here somewhere.
He, he's the same one that came in before?
Yeah, who said, who asked if uh, as a speaker, he came on to ask who uh.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. Oh, oh, okay, that was him. I didn't know.
But, but uh, Francisco, I don't have Commissioner Brown's cell phone. Somebody should be calling her because.
You let her know that she's.
Frozen on the screen. If, if, if she's, if she's having connectivity problems, we ought to say this to the rest, to, to Mr. Sofeli here, whoever else is coming on. Because if they want seven and she's not gonna be able to participate like this and it's, you know, a, a, a baked-in appeal here.
I would appreciate that, Vincent.
Yeah, this was Joseph Haynes.
So what I could do is I can email her. I don't, I don't actually have her contact. Neither do I. But she's been emailing me, so give me, we'll give you a second to work this out.
Maybe it's a good idea to start getting telephone numbers.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's Benjamin Wine. Um, I'm sorry to, to interrupt. I did get a hold of my uh, my project designer. He is going to be on, no problem. He's been having a trouble getting a hold of the licensed architect. But he said he would text me in a minute or so to see if he can get him on. And if he can get him on, then obviously it's a C variance case, so I guess I'll just chime in and let everybody know.
Okay, in the meantime, we're doing another, we'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Actually, yes.
Are you, you're representing the Junto Club?
No, this is Angelo Sofeli.
Angelo Sofeli, the name's wrong.
Term of Pyros in the Sofeli Paris and Geno Tempo. I represent the applicant.
Okay.
So uh, first, let's, let's straighten out uh, Lenora. Francisco, uh, were you able to contact her?
Can't hear you.
I'm not hearing anything here except the birds.
Yeah. I, I, I would say, does everybody go on mute? So this way we can knock off that bird noise. You're sporadic. And now you look like you're frozen on the screen.
Can she maybe go in through her phone on the video? If the laptop has a problem.
Can you do that, Lenora? Can you hear us? Can you raise your hand if you hear us? But it looks like you're frozen, so. Well, we won't have these problems in January when we come in person, huh?
I was thinking that same thing. Hopefully it'll be earlier though, so it's not so dark and cold.
Well, we're gonna be trampling through the snow.
Hello.
Hmm. Is that, uh, so Lenora has her hand raised? Is that, is that what I'm seeing?
Mm hmm.
Uh, meaning you're here, Lenora, but we can't see you?
We have to be able to hear her, though.
Yeah, of course.
I mean, the hand's not gonna work today. Technical difficulties is actually weird.
Hmm.
Francisco could hear us? He seemed like he was having some issues too.
Oh, I can hear you guys. Yeah, just by emailing her, asking if maybe she can join via a different device or.
Francisco, it is a little difficult to hear you. You're going in and out.
Oh, heavens. Okay, can you hear me now?
This is not the night to have all these difficulties with all these cases.
Yes.
Where is it? There goes Lenora.
Recording in progress.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear?
Yes, we can. Welcome back. No, that's because I'm on.
There's two of you on.
So. I'm on the phone now. Good, good.
Okay. All right, so let's continue.
All right. Excuse me, Ms. Brown, if you could mute your laptop, though. Your laptop, though.
I'm gonna exit from the laptop. I don't need it, do I?
No, you don't.
I don't need it, so I can exit out of it.
Yes.
All right, I'm just gonna leave it.
I don't need it, so I can.
There we go. We can still see you.
Okay, we're good. All right, so do we have the attorney, Angelo?
I'm here, Madam Chairman. I'm, I'm here.
Okay, before we proceed, we do have your notices.
Thank you.
Affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication. So Bridget, A one for this application, please.
One moment, this will be A one in evidence marked.
Thank you.
If I may begin, Madam Chairperson and Commissioners, um, I'm here representing the Franklin Social Restaurant is the name of the restaurant that is, uh, we're here to have outdoor cafe dining. Um, we are in the historic district. The, uh, and we have the Van Bors Park Historic District, and we have received approval from the Historic Commission for this application. In fact, the necessity of the application comes because we're fronting one street rather than another, which is detailed in your staff report. In any event, we're here tonight to do that, and with your indulgence, I'd like to call my first witness if I can.
Please do.
Dean, I need you. As a being of Dean.
Promoting Dean. Is there anyone else on your team for tonight?
Yes, I have one planner, Vincent, uh, Justin will be here. This is my, this is the applicant. Dean, could you give your name for the record?
Dean Marolakis.
I'm sorry, could Ms. Brown mute herself, please? Thank you. Dean, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. State and spell your name for the record.
Dean Marolakis, D E A N, M A R O U L A K O S.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dean, could you please give, uh, for the benefit of the board, what your position is with the applicant?
Yes, I am, uh, I'm the operating partner of Franklin Social Restaurant.
And you're familiar with the application?
Yes.
Dean, I'm gonna call you Dean. We're a little informal, I guess, because we're on Zoom, but, uh, you have had outdoor dining before at the restaurant. Is that true?
Correct. We opened in December of two thousand nineteen, so, um, we were granted, um, the, uh, COVID outdoor seating starting in the summer of two thousand twenty. Um, at that time, uh, through two thousand twenty-two, we had seating, um, actually all around the restaurant, uh, tables in front on Barrow Street, as well as tables all the way down Mercer to the back of our building, uh, sixty-eight Mercer. Uh, in addition, we also had the, uh, 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 street park let, um, uh, as well, that totaled about fifty-six seats.
So at the time, it was fifty-six feet seats, and as of tonight, with the application calls for how many seats?
Tonight, we are proposing twenty-six seats, all on the Mercer's side of the, uh, building and, uh, no street seating at all.
And have the table configurations been amended a bit?
Yes, um, in our original setup, we had, uh, several large tables, uh, all the way back towards sixty-eight Mercer. Uh, this proposal reduces, um, all but two tables to either two or three tops with one four top and one six top located, uh, in front of our courtyard under the tree, um, which, uh, is, uh, in the middle of the building.
And Dean, since you've been operating the restaurant since two thousand nineteen, you are aware of the ordinances in Jersey City that deal with, uh, noise, et cetera?
Yes, correct. We are, uh, aware of that. Um, uh, given that we are in a residential area, one thing we wanted to take into consideration was the concession that instead of being open till, uh, midnight on Fridays and Saturdays, we reduced that till an eleven P M curfew, um, as well as, um, having guests up, uh, between, on the, on the eleven o'clock nights, which would be Thursday, Friday and Saturday, uh, having guests out by ten thirty, which would allow us to break down the patio by eleven o'clock.
I see. And for the board's edification, how long has a commercial, either restaurant or bar, been at the premises, if you know?
From my knowledge, from guests that have come in and images I've seen, there's been something there at least twenty-five or thirty years when it was J C Winston's, um, if not longer.
I remember J C Winston's.
We hear a lot of stories about it from guests that come in.
And Dean, uh, in the operation of the cafe before, and again, if you are, if the board seat fits to approve this application, will you be advising customers of the curfew or when the outdoor dining will cease?
Absolutely. As we've done in the past, if, uh, a table is about to sit, uh, towards the tail end of, uh, the seating window, we let them know the closing time and are sure to drop their checks, uh, to them and ask them to leave or, or invite them inside for a, uh, a final drink, uh, so that we can abide by the, uh, ordinances and have everything struck in time.
And again, uh, as background, can you share with the board with the, the difference in the business between when you have outdoor dining and when you don't?
Yes, uh, we, since we didn't have it this past summer, we saw about a thirty percent drop off in, uh, in business. Uh, we would receive calls multiple times a day, uh, inquiring about our outdoor seating. Um, and then we'd have people, uh, decline to come since we didn't have, uh, that sidewalk cafe. We thought the, uh, a lot of the COVID fears were, would have been, uh, uh, eased, but we still found, we're still finding that there's still some lingering, uh, apprehension in this, uh, new age that we're in.
And if the board saw fit to approve this application, Dean, would you be willing to have the, any conditions imposed by the board to be part of that approval as the, as when you would stop the amount of seats?
Absolutely.
And you're also aware that the approval from the Historic Commission also had conditions. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And you're willing to abide by them as well?
Absolutely.
Right. And, uh, the staff report has noticed, noted two things, which I, I think should go in the record first, that since the restaurant fronts Barrow Street instead of Mercer Street, that's the reason you're here. If you had fronted Barrow Street, I mean Mercer Street, you would have not needed a variance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And would you be willing to have the resolution become part of a, you know, uh, refile deed so that anyone who purchases the restaurant, should you want to sell it, would be aware of the conditions of this board?
Absolutely.
Madam Chairperson, that's all I have. If the board has any questions?
Okay. No, I don't think so.
Um, in, in that event, I'd like to call my planner, Justin Acusta.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state and spell your full name for the record.
Justin Auxiello, A U C I E L L O, first name Justin, J U S T I N.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin, will you share your qualifications with the board, please?
Absolutely. Um, I am a, um, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have a master's in city regional planning from Rutgers University. Um, I have appeared, um, I don't believe this board, but I've been in front of the planning board, uh, on a few occasions in the past in the city. I've also, uh, appeared at, uh, at planning and zoning boards uh, on hundreds of occasions throughout New Jersey. Um, I have, I have worked on, on applications, uh, like the applicants uh, in the past. Uh, I'm very familiar, uh, with the neighborhood in which, um, this application is, is proceeding, and my license is active and current.
Great.
I would offer him as an expert.
Thank you. Yes, we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Justin, could you share, uh, with the board, you're familiar with this application, as you said, can you share with the board what you, you know, what preparation you made for tonight's testimony?
Sure, absolutely. Um, so of course, I've, I've been to the site. Uh, I've walked the neighborhood. Uh, I've, uh, reviewed, uh, your zoning ordinance, um, and, and your master plan. Um, I've, of course, reviewed, uh, the files that were submitted in conjunction with this application, uh, and I've reviewed the, uh, the memos, um, from your staff as well.
Well, could you give the board then the benefit of your expert opinion as to the merits of this application?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Um, so, so as was stated, uh, in the intro, we're, we're here this evening for a, uh, a, um, a D three variance for, uh, a conditional use, uh, violation, and I, I think it's important, just, you know, very briefly to talk about the difference between, uh, a D one and a D three variance. In a D one variance, um, that's for a use that's not permitted in the zone, and there's a, there's a, there's a, uh, you know, higher standard of proof that's required. In this instance, uh, the proposed use, which is, which is outdoor seating or, uh, or, uh, or sidewalk cafe seating, uh, the use is permitted. The, the reason why, uh, we're here this evening under the D three is that, uh, the D three is a, a violation of the, the conditional use standard, and the only reason why we're here is because the proposed, uh, use, uh, fronts on, uh, on Barrow Street, uh, and not, um, uh, Mercer Street. Um, your, your ordinance requires, uh, in the, uh, the, the, um, the Van Vors, um, district, uh, the frontage of a cafe on Mercer Street. So the only reason why we're here again is because, uh, the, the cafe is fronting on the other street, uh, which is not permitted, and therefore it's a violation of one of the standards of the conditional use. So the standard of proof for, uh, conditional use, uh, is to showing that the, um, the, the proposed use or the proposed, uh, uh, violation of, of the conditional use standard, uh, whether or not the site, uh, can accommodate that deviation. Um, as you heard from the applicant, again, um, you know, the applicant, um, has, has agreed to, uh, to reduce, uh, the, the operating hours. Uh, the, the applicant, I, I think is clear, has proposed a, you know, orderly, um, uh, makeup of, of the, of the outdoor area. Um, I believe that, um, the, the relief that is required, um, in, in, in my professional opinion, is a, is a minor deviation. So I think certainly as a, as a, as a, you know, professional planner, you know, understanding the site and the area, I think the board can be comfortable in granting this variance relative to whether or not the site does have the ability, uh, to accommodate the deviation. Um, relative to the positive criteria, uh, I certainly think that there are, there are purposes of zoning, um, that are advanced. Again, um, I think from a planning standpoint, your master plan speaks to, uh, to, to vibrancy and, uh, you know, economic activity. Um, I think certainly, uh, by providing, uh, outdoor seating, um, that is a, uh, a planning benefit to the community. Uh, I think it's important, you know, to provide that especially, um, you know, it was really popular during COVID, uh, and as the applicant has just, uh, you know, stated, uh, some of his business, uh, you know, had decreased um, because of, um, the, the lack of the outdoor seating. So I think having the outdoor seating, you know, certainly unfortunately, it seems like COVID is making some bit, some bit of a, of a comeback. I, you know, I think it's important for the community as well to provide, um, that option. Um, I think there's, uh, there's, there's more than sufficient space, uh, to accommodate, uh, this use. Uh, that speaks to the purpose of zoning under, uh, under, um, criteria G of the M L U L. Um, I certainly think there is sufficient, um, light air and open space associated, uh, with this, with this proposal, and that would be advanced under, um, the, the M L U L, um, under, under criteria C and, and the visual environment. I think having outdoor seating is important for, uh, the, the vibrancy of the city neighborhood. So certainly, um, that's a, a desirable visual environment and, uh, and, and creative design techniques that would fall under, um, um, criteria I. Um, relative to the negative criteria, that's a showing whether or not the, the grant of the variance will, will present a substantial detriment to the public good, and whether or not the grant of the variance will, uh, have a, um, negative, uh, the impact or impairment to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Um, relative to the first part of the negative criteria, I certainly don't see much in the way of any detriment. Certainly, I, I don't see any, uh, substantial detriments. I think the, uh, the Historic Preservation, uh, Commission in a memo dated, uh, August fourteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-three, um, stated that the proposed use of a sidewalk cafe is consistent with the prior approvals in the, in these districts and will not cause a, uh, negative impact on, on, on the, the resource of, uh, the adjacent district as well. Um, and, and I think, uh, as the applicant had stated, um, he's willing to reduce, uh, the, the, uh, the hours of operation there as well. So I think, you know, that is helpful, uh, as well in showing that there's not going to be a substantial detriment to public good. And lastly, relative to, uh, the zone plan and the zoning ordinance, again, this is a, a use that is permitted. Um, we are only here because it's fronting on one street, uh, and, and not the other street. Um, so, so, you know, on balance, um, you know, I would say that the, 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 uh, the benefits of, uh, of, of granting this variant certainly, uh, you know, do away the detriments, which again, I don't see many, uh, and certainly none are, are substantial. And, and lastly, as I had previously stated, but I think it's important to, to reiterate that, you know, the master plan in the city talks about, uh, economic development and, uh, and vibrancy, um, in, in these neighborhoods, and, and certainly I think that's another benefit, um, as well.
Thank you. I have nothing further, Madam Chairperson, unless the board has questions.
Okay. Um, that, does the, uh, board have any questions?
No. I just have one, I have one question. I, I know exactly where this is. Like, I remember going to the first place that he talked about.
Instance.
Right, right. So I just need to understand where the tables are. I guess I don't go that way very often. I mean, I love outdoor seating, but are they on the front of the building or the side of the building?
They move in a row.
That's right. I'm sorry.
Dean, want to handle that one?
Sure, they're, they're on the, the side of the building. They, uh, they would actually be right up against the, uh, the building, um, on, on the Mercer Street side.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Got it.
And, and in front of the fence that connects the, uh, the front and back building.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Is this, is this gonna be year round?
No, this is a, a temporary, temporary seasonal, the, uh, March through November, no heaters or anything like that, just umbrellas for the summertime.
Yeah, it used to be, uh, April till October, so till I changed it. So now it's, uh, it's seasonal, a little longer and a little bit better.
Okay, all right. Any more questions from the board? Francisco, do we have, um, any, 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 uh, anybody from the public?
Yes, uh, I do see several hands raised. Uh, for those who have their hands raised, this application is for two ninety-two barrels. So if you want to comment on this, please raise your hand. I'm promoting Thomas English. Oh, actually, I do see Rich Bojiano, so I'm going to promote him first. Don't know where he went. I promoted him.
All right, so go to the next one.
Promoting Thomas English. Oh, Thomas, can you wait to be sworn in, please?
Hello?
You can hear me.
Hello?
Thomas, we can hear you, but we can't see you.
Yeah.
Sorry. Uh, start video. Allow. There.
There you are.
You there?
Would you raise your right hand to be sworn?
Yes, I will.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, and please state and spell your full name for the record.
Thomas Kyle English. T H O M A S K Y L E E N G L I S H.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. English.
Okay. First of all, thank you, Commissioner, for letting me speak.
Mr. Thomas, please, uh, you know, you have only three minutes.
Three minutes, okay, I'll do it quickly then. Thank you. Um, I think there was clarification that this is, um, it says temporary sidewalk cafe. Um, I actually, I think it should be seasonal, um, cafe operation. Um, if that's the case, then there needs to be correction there. Um, my biggest issue is noise. I live right across from, um, Franklin Social. And I've been here through J C Winston's, I've been through, um, Barrow Street Bar and Grill and P J Ryan's. There's been many a times where they have been applicants, at least two that I can remember for sidewalk cafe, and they were denied. When J C Winston's, uh, expanded in two thousand thirteen into the garden area, into the back carriage area, there were stipulations and some of those stipulations have not been followed. Uh, crawl, I would call everybody's attention, that being the commissioners, to the application drawing. Um, first of all, the partition that is required by code, um, in Jersey City ordinance is not to correct height or type. There's only supposed to be one ingress and egress, which then facilitates a problem of delivering food into a very narrow area. They're asking for a six, a five foot width when ADA as well as the ordinance here calls for a six foot pedestrian walkway. Some of the measurements on the drawings are wrong. And in the fact, if you bring it down and follow the ordinance correctly, you're only going to have three foot, one and one half inches from the building to the partition area. And that does not facilitate easy of ingress and egress for customers. Um, so I don't think the variance is just only on the Barrow Streets, uh, I mean Barrow Street Mercer Street side. The drawings are not in compliance with your own individual code.
Thinking.
The other thing is, is we have, since the first of the year have had, I know of, six reported, um, false alarms by the fire department. Your exhaust fan is not capable of handling the exhaust generated in the kitchen now. It does make noise. It needs to be upgraded if you're going to put more pressure on the fan. The drawings don't show, they show the umbrellas being over the partition, which is outside the ordinance. Um, you've already answered that you're willing to compromise on the hours of operation. Lastly, is the storage of the chairs and that sort of thing, I shouldn't say lastly. But there was an incident, uh, with fire as the firing department looked at, uh, the fire escape on the existing building in regards to the garden area.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You missed it, English.
Promoting Rebecca.
Ms. Dix, we have to see you.
Uh, okay. Start video.
There you are. Would you raise your right hand to be sworn?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and if you could state and spell your full name for the record.
Rebecca Jane Dix, D I C K S.
Thank you.
Go ahead, listen.
Um, well, the, I'm sorry, Mr. English didn't get an opportunity to finish because he is the one who's been vastly affected. We have had a problem with noise in, uh, Dean's establishment, um, even without outdoor seating. And so it is a concern. I understand for business reasons, but you know, I, I have business reasons too. I have two tenants in my building, both of whom are unhappy with the noise that happens there from Thursdays through, um, Saturdays. And so I, I appreciate the curfew, that sounds encouraging. Um, uh, I want to know who's going to enforce it. I want to know if it isn't enforced, who, uh, what kind of a contact we will be given to call and see if we can remedy the situation. Um, I want to be sure that if in fact this is sold on to someone else, that they will in fact have all these, um, same restrictions. Um, and that's basically my, my feeling. Um, there are a lot, a number of small children in the, in the neighborhood, you know, go to bed early. We are an unusual neighborhood. It isn't just, uh, there aren't any other restaurants or any other, uh, businesses right where we are. So, you know, it's, it's, it's intrusive when it's noisy. Uh, there have been large groups that have come in that honestly, um, hen parties that have come in, I think they've been bussed in or something in the afternoons and they, uh, it's overwhelming at times. So, uh, if, if the policy, if the noise can be, uh, enforced to keep it quiet, if someone's on the, on the case and we have a viable way of contacting someone who will in fact do something about it, that, that would might make us more amenable to the change.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dix. Francisco, we have anybody else?
Meeting Dave Michael. We do have four more hands that are raised.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Michaels.
Hello, the name is Dave. Michael is my middle name.
No, okay.
Okay, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could state and spell your full name for the record.
My name is David Richardson.
Thank you.
So I am also a neighbor of, um, the restaurant, uh, next door. Um, and I came to say much of what some of the other neighbors have said, um, for us, it's primarily about the noise in the sidewalk space. A lot of what I heard tonight was about, um, providing outdoor space for, uh, people to eat. But as far as I know, there is an outdoor space. In, in two thousand thirteen, they added an outdoor space to this building. It's between the two existing buildings, they added it. Um, so there is outdoor space. So I don't understand, um, when they say that people are calling and they can't sit outside and they're afraid of COVID. I'm just not sure I buy it. There is outdoor space there. So I, I kind of think that doesn't really sound, um, like an issue. There is outdoor space. They just want more outdoor space. Um, there's a lot of noise and I live in the neighborhood. I haven't walked by it once. I'm here every day. And there's a lot of noise. They host a lot of events there. There's weddings all the time on the weekends. I walked by there now. There's one and the guests are always outside smoking cigarettes and things like that. And adding to that, it's like an all day thing from brunch through the evening and it's just a lot of noise in terms of the space. There's trees out there too. It's not just, um, the seating. So by the time you put the fence up and there's trees trying to walk by, there's not a lot of room there on Mercer. Um, so you can't certainly walk two by two. We have a neighbor across the street who is, uh, physically disabled. I can't imagine trying to get a wheelchair through that narrow space next to where the trees are and when the fence comes out. Um, you know, so those are kind of my concerns is the space on the sidewalk there as well as the noise that seems to be going on a lot. Um, and the fact that there already is outdoor space there. They were granted outdoor space in two thousand thirteen. They have outdoor space. It sounds like they got a temporary thing for COVID, which is great. And now they're trying to make it, let's be honest, a permanent thing. Uh, we can say it's a temporary, but it's not saying that it's going to go March to November yet. In December, it's cold. This is now a, a permanent fixture and it seems like it was granted for a little bit and I, as well as many of the other neighbors are opposed to the additional seating that's going to be there for the noise and the space on the sidewalk for pedestrians.
Can I ask something, Francisco? I don't, I don't know who it answers. Um, I know the outside seating ordinance when it was put together, uh, they have, it has to be applied for every year. You don't get, you're not guaranteed the outdoor, outdoor seating permanently. Um, in addition, if there's a noise issue outside, the Department of Commerce, Maynard Woodson, they have to get contacted and they come down and they're pretty good at it. And they come down with a sound barometer, uh, in order to test the noise. If it's determined that that's the case, then they would be fine. If they get, if they get troubled, if they're troubled more than once, uh, they could request a hearing for their outdoor seating, especially if they're trying to get it next time. There's no guarantee they're going to get it next time. So there are things in place, hopefully to get enforced, but I'm saying there are parameters involved. Uh, the outdoor seating isn't a, the, the, the way it's set up might be the way it'll be set up, but it doesn't mean they're going to get it every year.
You are correct, Commissioner Zabiki.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Mr. Richardson?
Oh, that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn Burton?
Sorry, I'm trying to get my video to work. There we go.
Right, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and please state and spell your full name for the record.
Yes, my name is Caroline, C A R O L I N E, middle name K K A Y, last name Burton, B U R T O N.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. I'm, I'm joining actually from Virginia because I care so much about this issue. I live across the street, um, from the establishment we're talking about. I think much of what, I, I agree with everything that, um, my neighbors have already stated. Um, noise being a major and, and primary issue. And I, and I can tell you that, um, in the past, in warmer months, when, when doors had been open to the establishment and I've gone over and said, you know, it's too noisy, could we shut these doors? Um, and, and I was met with, yes, of course, and five minutes later, the noise continues and, and everything is going on as it was. So I don't, um, you know, I like to think I'm a good neighbor and would definitely go straight to the establishment and try to, um, voice my concerns, but I'm, I'm concerned in this case because I feel like we, this establishment, they do have outdoor seating as, um, my one neighbor pointed out. Um, and it's like we're giving them an inch and an inch and an inch. Um, and we also do have to consider that eventually this could be an establishment that is owned by another owner. Um, there is outdoor seating as has been stated. I'd also like to point out there is a back door, um, going to the, the small building that was only meant for emergency purposes. And that door is being used on a, on a daily basis. So I, I'm not sure why that's been allowed, um, but it has been. I think also Mr. English pointed out the fire trucks, which are constantly showing up at night, um, also causing additional noise. Uh, patrons that are leaving the establishment, if they've had too much to drink, will hang out on the street, um, sometimes have arguments. Um, this is very disruptive. It is a historical residential neighborhood, as you all know. So I, I'm very concerned about allowing this outdoor seating that will just further disrupt and add to the noise that we're already experiencing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Richard. And there are two more hands that are raised.
Where am I? Don't see me. Oh, wait, muted?
All right, we need to see you, Mr. Ruda.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay.
I can't, I see my name, I don't see the visual.
Yeah, neither do we.
All right, wait, uh, start my video. Was that what I have to hit? Okay, there we go. Are we there? Can we hear me?
Yes.
Would you raise your right hand to be sworn?
Absolutely.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you, and if you could state and spell your full name for the record.
Richard, R I C H A R D, Rueda, R U E D A, M D O, whatever, R U E D A, sorry. Am I good to go?
Yes.
Okay, so my first question actually is for the commission. Um, back when it was P J Ryan's, this restaurant was a non-conforming use in a residential historic. conforming use in a residential historic area. And at the time, city planner, I don't know if she was a city planner or commissioner Claire Davis said that this should never be a, this should never have sidewalk seating, and the reason they said that was because in return, that's when they first got the expansion of the restaurant to include the rear garden and the carriage house. Prior to that, they didn't have access to that as the restaurant. So I want to know what's changed, clearly the sidewalk has an increase. What has changed about your assessment back then that makes this different now? Or is this, whether it's the three or the two D variance, a way to circumvent? Um, so I'm a little confused about that. And then a few comments to Dean, I appreciate you want to monitor the noise. Expanding it, you can monitor the noise with closed doors, or shall we say open doors, and I'm not blaming you Dean. I know you're a business, I know you're trying to make money, understand that as well. But no one, not one of your owners lives in Jersey City. And the noise, and I know that, you know, the number of people going has declined and you're trying your best to get people to come. You have to monitor the noise, and at this point you can't with the volume you do get on these dens. And as far as grandfathering, whatever it is you agree to yearly reapplying, I'm a little confused when I thought it was grandfathered in that, you know, you would never have outdoor seating. And yes, everyone is commenting, you do have outdoor seating, but it's enclosed now, and we're okay with that, because that's less noise that we hear. Uh, you weren't supposed to have a bar up at the Junto or whatever it's called, there's a bar up there, but you know what, we don't hear it, we don't care. Uh, the problem is, and I know it's very hard, you know, you're you're serving drinks, you're serving food, you're trying to make money. But when they open the doors, they come out, the urine, the vomit on the cars. Now there's even been drug paraphernalia, which has been gathered and given to the police. And please, I am not asserting that Dean or anyone at that establishment has anything to do with drugs. He can't be responsible for what his patrons does, but what he can be responsible for is reducing the noise. And I know that Tom and someone else is gonna speak that's well versed in this language of city planning. I mean, the numbers aren't there to have uh, you know, the right of way of walk on the sidewalk and still have your outdoor cafe. And you've said that, you know, people were asking for outdoor cafes during summer. There were outdoor tables there the whole summer, I mean, I don't know if that was allowed, but there were always tables in the front and on the side and it, and again, and I I know that Rebecca suggested, well, or that you would, that you know, you would put all this away at a certain hour. And like, you know, I'm reasonable. If you had your last dinner order at eight thirty and had that whole circus hidden by ten, then, you know, it would be somewhat appeasable, but eleven, eleven turns into midnight, and what you don't understand, Dean, because I know you're busy working.
I am, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Promoting Jim? Hi, Jim. You're muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and please state and spell your full name for the record.
Sure, my name is Jim Dowling, D O W L I N G, and I live at Ten Bomby Air Place. Um, so so I have a a couple of questions which you can come back to after I I finish, so my first question is it it it's unclear to me what the specific conditions are that you're trying to vary, is it only the Barrow Street versus Mercer Street frontage, so if you can answer that, please. Also, um, the the application states that the use is nonconforming. Um, so my question to you is, why is this being processed as a D three variance rather than a D two, which is an expansion of the nonconforming use, the D two is is um the the proofs required for the D two are more stringent proofs than the D three, why is not the D three variance just subsumed within the planning discussion for the D two variance? Um, another question is where will the tables be stored? Um, the fire access for the building above is through that um uh covered courtyard um behind a a fence within it. Um, so that's a a fire exit for the people in that building, they need to come down to fire escape, get through that courtyard and exit. Um, the plans should show where the tables will be stored and that there's a clear, wide enough path for people to safely exit the building, also, it's my recollection that the last variance approval that um a condition was that the building would not be entered through uh the various buildings would not be entered through Mercer Street, only through Barrow Street, and now the the Junto is being entered directly from that building. The covered area in the middle is being entered, the side entrances is being uh used as well, it's also my recollection that the building that the Junto is in now would only be used for catering. Um, it's clearly not the 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 case, the upstairs space is not may maybe used for catering also, but it's used as a as a bar regularly. My recollection is that that was a um condition of the previous variance and that's not being met. Um, also, I'll I'll support my neighbors in terms of the issues related uh to noise, it's not a question of um, you know, hypothesizing that there might be noise in the future, we know because the restaurant is there and there have been tables there already, that noise is an issue, so it's 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 not a guess, we're in the middle of a residential neighborhood, we're not on Grove Street, we're not on Newark Avenue, this is a an exceptional case, and I I believe that uh the the variance would create a substantial detriment um to the public good, um that in in regard to the um character of the neighborhood, it it would impair the zone plan and the zone ordinance, and it's my belief that if treated as a D two variance, that in in fact, there really are no special reasons related um to the grant of this variance. Um, so so um I I do object to uh at least the way it is presented now on the plans um the the uh application before the board today. And I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, good timing.
And promoting the last hand, the threes? Can you please unmute yourself and?
You, okay, and I'm trying to uh start video? There we go. Hello, everybody, uh Commissioners, my name-
Hello, could you raise your right hand to be sworn, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I I will, and I do.
Thank you, and if you could state and spell your full name for the record?
Uh, put my hand down, Bridget, you got me nervous. Uh, uh, my name is Stephen Davison, uh S T E V E N. Last name Davison, D A V I S O N. And for the record, I'm used to Bridget yelling at me, uh, uh, we, I I used to be a a former Commissioner of the Jersey City Rent Leveling Board. And I'm also a former Commissioner of Elections for Hudson County, so hello fellow Commissioners. I also happen to live within about seventy paces of this whole mishegash. Um, I'd like to just chime in that I'm a bit appalled at my neighbors. Um, it, I I feel like uh I've lived down here for thirty years, I've seen J C Winston and all the other derivations, and I can tell you Franklin Social is about as sedate a bar as you can get. You could go by there on Monday night, I think they're closed, dead. Tuesday night, hardly anybody in the joint. Wednesday night, very quiet. We go there right now, Thursday at eight o'clock. I'll bet you there's a handful of people in there, but noisy and loud and this crazy party, no, it's not, it's quite sedate, so we're talking about Fridays and Saturdays. And maybe Sunday brunch, right? I think the noise, I I live a, like I say, about seventy paces away, I'm not right on top of it like some of the other neighbors, so to be fair, uh, there may be noise issues that don't affect me directly, but I've been by that place plenty of times. It's not loud, we have bars all over the place, restaurants all over the place. This is a sedate, quiet little joint. So, um, and I actually had the opportunity to use their uh table, uh the tables on the street when they were available. And it was charming, and yeah, it was a little awkward the way they had it set up this time, but now I've seen the plans and it looks like it's a lot more streamlined. And will it be a Grand Boulevard for people to walk through? Probably not, but it it's quite manageable and it's a lovely thing for the neighborhood. I want to see this establish and make it, I don't know how they're holding on with the with the the dim lights and the quietness I've seen over the last two years. I don't know how they're still in business, to be honest with you. So I can just say, I think the neighbors' concerns, the one thing that I wasn't gonna mention this, but this is a fair complaint about the fan where, you know, they've had some problems with the fan, but I would assume they're a business, they're gonna address that, other than that, I think everything else is quite overstated. And uh Commissioners could be quite comfortable approving this, I think, in 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 my uh estimation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes uh the hands that were raised.
Do we have any questions from the board?
Yeah, um, I would think that uh I know, because I know the the requirements usually involve with all this. Uh, I'm pretty certain that, and I'm assuming that um, the tables do come in, someone said that the tables stay out, they're actually supposed to come in. Uh, they can't be left out there, they do have to come in when the when the when the outside seating time expires each day. Um, and of course, if that's true, the point that the person made uh regarding where they're stored, that's an issue too. So that, you know, hopefully that gets addressed properly. Because it will be an issue going forward if it comes up uh when you seek to get your yearly seasonal outdoor seating license.
Yeah. Anybody else? I have a question, I know um several of the speakers made reference to a plan, I didn't see any plans presented. Is there a plan that you present?
Uh, our plan was submitted to the board.
The plans are in the data portal, but they were not presented tonight.
They're not presented, yeah. We have a lot of different uh cases, we always see everything.
I want to present them. Yeah, i- if the board would like, we can upload them.
What? I'm sorry, what they, what you're saying?
I said we could share the screen, we can upload the plans.
Would you please?
Sure.
Is it the drawing that's on the architectural plans?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
In God, okay.
They're in the, they're in the file.
Yeah, we we did submit them.
Yeah, it's just a drawing, it's just a drawing like the sketch of it.
I see, okay.
Down at the bottom there, yeah. It's hard to tell, actually, to be honest with you.
I I did look at the, I I did go to the address and I saw maybe a little table on the side. I didn't see a a specifically a plan.
It's a little hard to tell, it's a little hard.
Yeah, can can we enlarge this so that I can, yeah?
Working on it.
Thank you. Like I said, I did see a little table on the side, but I didn't see the plans.
The the bottom right hand corner, you can zoom in.
Oh, thank you, it's blocked.
All right, I knew you had that that patio seating in the back, because I've been there, uh. So you do have, you're putting in that extra seating additionally in the back also, that you extended? Mr. Heinz? Are you extending that, I see that extra um seating area, so you also have the patio, are you extending it also, is this part of the plan to extend it as well?
Do you want to swear, we have a Dean answer? Uh, Madam Chair, if I if I can have my client answer that question?
Aye.
Dean, can you answer that?
You hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, um, so um we're just uh in terms of the existing seating area in in the back, that's actually the carriage house um that they're referring to in between the patio and the main building, so what we're proposing is just the side seating um that you see on the street up to that six top before the um the back building.
Okay, so it's just a side that you're proposing, okay, so you already have the back seating though?
Yes.
Outside seating in the back.
The existing patio.
One additional seating.
Correct, patio is the covered area.
I see, all right. And and you're, so you're gonna have some kind of cover on this, a half round, I see here you have umbrellas. You have seedings, okay.
Correct.
All right, great, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dean.
You're welcome.
Okay.
So if there are no more questions from the Commissioners, do we? Should we hear from staff? Okay, so I my report is uploaded into the data portal, I will also show that on my screen. But I do want to say Planning Staff agrees with the testimony given by the applicant's planner, I did want to show the board. Give me one second so I can show you my report. Okay, so I did want to show the board before we start, the location of where the seating would go. Um, just so that way you have some sort of reference on the ground of exactly where it's located and what it currently looks like today. Um, you can kind of see how large the sidewalk is, I did get instance of someone walking with their dog, so there is ample space outside. Um, I did also want to reference an older nineteen thirty eight historic tax card that does show that this building was a mixed use um building from the nine, from nineteen thirty eight, as far as we can tell.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I will be, I will try to be very brief and go over, I did hear concerns from the residents, I do want to reiterate that. So a D three conditional use variance is neither prohibited, is a use that is neither prohibited throughout the zone nor permitted at every location in the zone, rather, it is a permitted use at those locations in the zone where the use meets the conditions set forth in the zoning ordinance. So a variance for deviation from a conditional use allows the applicant to engage in a conditional use despite the applicant's failure to meet the condition, one or more conditions. Um, in this case, the H-zone does allow for retail uh sales, retail services and offices limited to the ground floors as well as the parlor floors of attached dwelling units as conditional uses. However, in the Van Vors Park Historic uh District, which is where we're located today, uh the sidewalk cafe accessory to restaurants is permitted under section F two of the chapter three forty five dash fifty eight zoning code, and it reads restaurants category one and two, limited to the ground floor of properties from two ninety seven to three eleven Grove uh along the west side of Grove Street. In addition to those restaurants permitted from two seventy three to two seventy nine Grove under either the Majestic Theater redevelopment plan or the Grove Mercer redevelopment plan. From two ninety to three oh four Grove Street, along the east side of Grove Street and number twenty four through number twenty eight street, where a commercial Mercer Street started. Where a commercial use is already in place at the time of adoption of the ordinance and having direct pedestrian access from Grove or Mercer Street, so that is the specific condition. Since the restaurant fronts Barrow instead of Mercer Street, the applicant is requesting uh this is a minor error, but they are requesting a D three variance. Uh, the applicant does not comply with the condition of the of the zone and thus violates the ordinance, which is why they're here today for the D three relief. Staff does recommend approval, um provided that the applicant complies with all conditions imposed by the Historic Preservation Commission under its approval of H twenty three uh dash zero four four, so they do have Historic Preservation uh Commission approval. Um, with that said, staff does recommend approval.
Okay. Okay, more questions? May I have a vote, I have a motion? May I have a vote? I have a motion?
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve K Z two zero two three dash zero 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 three, as presented to the board this evening.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
On a motion to approve, Commissioner Allen?
Uh, thank you for the public coming out and expressing your concerns. We hear everything you say. I'm a yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabluky?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadine?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Arroyo?
I have kind of like mixed feelings, because I also feel like, you know, I can understand that at the noise level from from their point of view, and I can understand Mr. Dean, I'm going to call you Dean, his concern for, you know, trying to get people into his his restaurant. All right, I'll vote yes on this one.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson and the board. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bridget, do you need a break before we start the other one?
Yes, I think that would be lovely.
Okay.
How long?
Ten minutes. Ten? Bridget? Okay, ten minutes. We'll be back. Okay? Okay, so we're back. This one is case ten, which is C two zero two three dash zero 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 seven. And this is the prime preliminary and final major site plans with a C and D variance. And the address is eighty one dash eighty three Hutton. And the attorney is Charles J. Harrington.
Promoting Jeffrey Lewis.
You don't see Charles Harrington?
Promoting.
Oh, there he goes.
Mr. Harrington, we do have your notices for this case. Your affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication. Bridget will mark this as A one for this application. I lost you, Bridget. Where are you?
I'm right here. This will be A one in evidence for this application.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. This application before you tonight is for a use variance to develop a multifamily building. It is a project that will in involve the restoration of the former Elks Lodge that is located at the corner of Hutton Street and Cambridge Avenue. The some board members may recall, I believe Commissioner Aurora and Commissioner Allen were heard the prior application in April for a project on this site. At that time, the applicant had proposed a project with fourteen residential units and twelve parking spaces in a similar five stories, little different restoration of the building. That that application was denied by this board by a vote of four to three, so it did not pass. So we went back to the drawing board. My client has been working with the community on the version that we are presenting to you tonight. It is a smaller development in that it is now proposing nine residential units as opposed to fourteen. And we're proposing nine parking spaces as opposed to the twelve. So it'll be one to one, but the, you know, the garage space is a little bit smaller, but we we've maintained you know, some of the comments that were made by the community and and the board at the last meeting. And you'll see those during the presentation. And we believe it's it's a much better project that you'll see here tonight. With you have larger, much larger units, which we we believe will promote families living in this building. We've set the building back further at the ground floor to provide for some more landscaping and to to address safety issues with the garage in and out. We are still maintaining a five foot side side yard or rear yard setback, if you will, to the adjacent driveway behind us. And the materials have have changed a little bit, and then you you'll see again, the rehab of of the building. We're not trying to cut through floors, so we are following the exterior and interior. So Mr. Lewis will take you through that, how it really, I think it makes it pop and and make it a better project. So I have, so I I believe all these changes are substantial changes. So, you know, while while the project yeah, a a project for this property was presented and denied in April, this is substantially different. So we are presenting it tonight for the use variance and a height variance. And with that said, I'm I have two witnesses tonight, Mr. Lewis, it's our architect, and Charles Height is our planner. I do have our traffic engineer and available if you have any questions as well, as well as our civil engineer. But I think I think these two experts will will bring bring the project through to the board.
And Mr. Harrington, just so we can move it along, yes, Mr. Lewis and Mr. Height have been before this board many times. Their expertise has been recognized as long as their licenses are current. We could just get on with the testimony.
Okay, can Mr. Lewis and Mr. Height, can you confirm that your licenses are current?
How about if I swear them in first?
Yeah.
Miss Mr. Lewis, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state and spell your full name for the record.
Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I S.
Mr. Height, raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you please state and spell your full name for the record?
Yes, Charles Height. First name is C H A R L E S, last name is H E Y D T.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the record, my license is active and in good standing in New Jersey. With that, I will bring my screen up so we can walk through these plans for you.
I'm sorry, is anybody hearing that besides me?
Yes, I am. Yes, I hear it.
It sounds muddled.
Okay, can everyone see the plans?
Yes.
Yes, we can, Mr. Lewis.
Okay, great. So as Charles mentioned, I am going to emphasize the changes that we made to address the concerns that were brought up at our previous meeting. To the right here, you can see the historic photograph of the building. We do intend to restore or recreate the historic two story building that you see there. And then we are going to add a new addition, both to the rear of the existing building and above the existing building. The building is going to be a five story addition as it was before, or five stories in total, excuse me. And the unit count has been reduced from fourteen units to nine. This is three two bedroom apartments that average one thousand five hundred and fourteen square feet, five three bedroom apartments that average one thousand four hundred and fifty nine square feet, and a four bedroom apartment that is one thousand seven hundred and forty four square feet. So as Chuck mentioned, these are larger units that are intended to attract families. Quickly looking at the demolition plan. We are keeping the facade of the original building and all the
Nope, nope, you're going out. I don't know what's wrong with your audio, but that all just went out.
Yeah, you're breaking up.
Oh, I apologize.
It seemed like if he, you if he gets cool, the minute he gets closer to the screen on the microphone, the buzz will come in.
Okay, so if I stay still here, I'm good?
Yes, don't move from there. That position is good.
I will not move. I will not move in this. Okay, so here we're looking at our proposed site plans. We are eliminating one curb cut that's located around here and adding a new ten foot concrete curb cut at the garage door. We have new concrete curbs, new concrete sidewalks, six new street trees. We have existing planting areas on the front of the building at Hutton Street and along Cambridge. We will be replanting these areas. We're extending this area further along Cambridge Street than they are now. And also, there's some fences around there now that we will be removing as well and opening that up. Looking at the new building, we're we have the existing building that will be staying. We're proposing a new addition to the back and then above for a total of five stories. As was mentioned, at the rear property line on the Cambridge Avenue side, we do have a five foot setback. This is the property line where there's a driveway for the neighboring property behind us. Also, the garage area, previously, this whole section of the building, the back condition, was stepped out all the way to the property line. So now, instead of doing that, we're going to bring the building straight across. This gives us an almost seven foot setback from the front property line. So it's much safer. It's just that much more space that we have between the driveway, the cars coming out of the garage door, and people walking along the sidewalks. So that makes it a much safer situation at the driveway. The only thing, the last thing that we're not actually showing on this plan, we are proposing a stormwater management system for this building. It was designed by others, but it is basically a storage tank in the basement of the building. Hold on, I'm sorry. I apologize. Give me one second. Okay, so here we are. This is the proposed. There was. Okay. Now I'm back and I'm sorry. So here we are at the proposed first floor plan. We're going to walk through the floor plans now. Starting at the left on Cambridge Avenue, there's the second staircase. Then we have our garage. This is parking for nine cars. We have one to one parking. And we have EV chargers at every charging at every parking spot. We also have bicycle storage for five bicycles here. And then a direct access to the main lobby. The main lobby is also accessed from Hutton Street. This is the main entrance to the building. Off of the lobby, we have elevator, the main stair, all of our meters, sprinkler room, as this will be a fully sprinkled building, a package room and our trash and recycling room, which is also directly accessed from the garage area for easy removal. Lastly, on this floor, we do have the lower level of what is a duplex apartment. So on the ground floor in the corner of the of the building, we have a living dining kitchen area, half bath, a washer dryer. All apartments are going to have a washer dryer in the apartment and then a stair up to the second floor. So now moving to the second floor. And I just want to stay with that apartment right now. You come up these stairs and you have a small den area and then two bedrooms and two bathrooms, just to finish that apartment off. There are two, three more apartments on this floor. Facing Hutton Street, we have a three bedroom, two bath apartment, two and a half bath apartment, excuse me. And facing Cambridge Avenue, we have a two bedroom, two bath apartment. And then lastly, in the back of the building, we have the lowest level of what is a triplex apartment. This apartment has is on the second, third, and fourth floors. On this floor, we have the living dining kitchen area, full bathroom, and then the stair going up to the next floor. Now here we are looking at the third floor, and the first thing to note here, this is the first floor that's above the existing building that we're restoring. So we did step back this floor six feet from the face of the building at both street elevations. You can see that here and here. We're using that space for private terraces as well as green roof trays. There are two three bedroom apartments on this floor facing the street, and each of these has access to their own private roof terrace. And then lastly, on this floor, there is the second level of that triplex apartment. On this floor, that apartment has a bedroom, a half bath, a small den area, and a stair which again goes up and down. Moving to the fourth floor, the fourth floor is very similar to the third floor. We have the two three bedroom units facing the streets, the same as below. The third floor of the triplex has a master suite. So a full bath and a bedroom, as well as the washer dryer, and then a stair which goes down and then also up to a roof deck area. Now here we are on the fifth floor. The fifth floor, we are stepping back again. So the total step backs now are twenty feet from the Hutton Street property line and sixteen feet in total from the Cambridge Street property line. On this floor, we only have one apartment. It's our four bedroom apartment. It has terraces facing both streets and over five hundred square feet of green roof trays. And then lastly, as I mentioned before, in the back, there is a private roof deck for that triplex apartment. You would come up the stair and this would be the top level roof deck. And this is the common roof deck. It's nine hundred and forty six square feet in total. It's accessed by both stairs and the elevator, setback from the building line on all sides. And it's surrounded by a three foot wide planter box on all sides as well, just to keep it buffered from everything. And this is common and it's accessible by all building tenants. And now we're moving on to the building elevations. This is the Hutton Street elevation. So we are restoring, repairing, replacing in kind all of the existing finishes to the building. This includes the brick, the brick and cast stone piers that you see here. All the cast stone building bands, as well as the cast stone pediments. They're on both sides of the building. We're also restoring all the window and door surrounds and treatments. And in this case, as Chuck didn't mention, all of our window and doors are going to match the existing size and location. So previously, we had attempted to take these two pretty tall stories and squished them down into three floors and adjusted the window pattern to mesh that. We're not proposing to do that anymore. We're going to restore this existing two story building as a two story building as it always was. With that, we are stepping back the addition, the source above, as I mentioned. This is actually an improvement previously where these floors, these upper floors were not stepped back. They're right up against the the front finish of the building. And then also, we've changed the material. Previously, we were using fiber cement panels on these upper floors. We've changed that to be a glass curtain wall system. And this is definitely an improvement. It's it's not only a more expensive finish it finish, but it's it's far more appropriate for the historic character that we're looking at here. We do have a rendering that I'll show you at the end that shows this a little more clearer than the line drawing does. But for now, I'm going to move on to the Cambridge Avenue elevation around the corner. So again, at the corner, this is the existing building that will be restored, just as I outlined for the Hutton Street elevation. Here, we have the lower two stories of the rear addition. They're going to be, they were designed to match the historically restored building, both in finishes and style. And then again, we have that three story curtain wall with the step backs up above. This is the south elevation. This is what I would call the Cambridge Avenue side elevation. This is the basically elevation where the driveway of our neighboring property would be coming by here. So the finishes here at the ground floor is a stucco finish. And then up above, we're using light beige fiber cement panels. And the other thing that I'd like to mention here that we changed is we added much more windows. It was more of a solid finish previously. Now it's there are more windows than we had previously. And here we have the Hutton side elevation. This elevation is mostly against the adjacent building, and wherever it is exposed, we're going to finish it with a lycra fiber cement siding. Then here, these are our sightline diagrams, showing someone looking at our building from across the street. And I think what we're trying to show here is that the fifth floor is setback so that it won't read very well from the street. So as you're walking down the street, it's really going to read more like a four story building than a five story building. That was the intent. And lastly, I do want to show the rendering. And Chuck, I'm not sure, do we need to mark this as an exhibit?
Yeah, let's let's mark this as A two.
Okay, this will be A two in evidence for this application.
Thank you. And so this is a rendering looking from the corner of Hutton and and Cambridge at our building. And I think it gives you a better idea of what the curtain wall system will look like. It's a really It's a really, it's really designed to kind of disappear as much as possible and emphasize the historic character of the building below. Um, so Chuck, unless you could think of anything you'd like me to address directly, I think that would conclude my testimony.
No, I, I have no further questions for Mr. Lewis and I don't know, Madam Chair, if you, you want to wait until Mr. Height is completed with his testimony or if the board has any questions at this point in time.
I believe we'll wait.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, then, um, I'm going to move right into, uh, Mr. Height's testimony and Mr. Height, just please, for the record, I don't recall if you confirmed that your, your license is current, uh, in the beginning, if you could note that on the record.
No further ado, it, it is still in good standing in New Jersey. Um, so.
Terrific.
All right. Uh, no, I, I do have the pleasure of presenting before this board as well as the planning board, uh, in Jersey City quite often. Our firm, Dresner Robin, does work on a variety of applications. Um, so we do appear here often. Um, I am going to focus on the variance relief, but I did want to reiterate that Mr. Lewis's testimony covered, uh, some of the beneficial aspects that I will just reiterate. Um, so I'll try and, uh, fill in where, where I can as a, as, as a planner. Um, with respect to the use variance for a multi-family use. Um, and, and Mr. Lewis, if, if you could bring up your cover sheet with the aerial that might be helpful for reference. Thank you. Um, we have a, uh, our, a particular, uh, opportunity here, um, to realize uh, uh, an adaptive reuse, a historic preservation project, uh, as well as, um, uh, on a property that's, in my opinion, particularly suitable as, uh, recognized under the MLUL and, and appropriate case law. Uh, that's the test that, uh, would support a D one use variance. So first and foremost, we are in the R one, uh, residential district. We are proposing a residential use. Uh, that will be replacing the assembly hall, um, the Elks Lodge, which actually was a, a non-conforming use. Um, so that, that's a little bit of the zoning history. Um, we are in a good location where approximately two hundred and fifty feet away from Central Ave, which is a mixed use corridor through the heights in this section. Um, we are also on the corner of Cambridge and Hutton. Uh, so when typically on corners, we're able to realize a larger structure, a more prominent structure. Um, and that's the case throughout, throughout the city. Um, we are also adjacent to, uh, to, uh, what, what I would say is, is non-traditional R one uses. We have, um, an, an existing, uh, structure to the west on Hutton. That's three stories. Um, we also have the, uh, driveway use that is, provides parking and driveway access to, uh, the commercial facility that fronts onto central. Um, so we have a little bit of a, a buffer in those adjacent uses that we're able to realize, uh, a taller, um, multi-family structure on this property. Um, in terms of square footage, the lots oversized at six thousand four hundred and sixty-one square feet. Uh, in R one, the, the typical zoning standard, uh, for most of the lots is two thousand five hundred square feet. So it's more than double, um, that, that, uh, that standard, and it's also greater than what, um, other districts would allow for multi-family uses to, uh, occupy lots. So it's, that's a six thousand square foot threshold. So we're, we're greater than that. Um, we did, uh, do a zoning, uh, a density analysis, um, with other properties in the block and in the vicinity. So we identified, um, a total of six, uh, multi-family uses. Uh, those densities, uh, range from fifty to a hundred and thirty-nine units per acre. Um, the proposed application tonight with the reduced, uh, unit count to nine units is at sixty-one units per acre. So again, it falls within that density range of other similar multi-family units in this neighborhood. And I think that's, that's important. Um, and it just goes to show the balance and the appropriate, uh, use of the property for the multi-family, uh, multi-family use. Um, in terms of other aspects, the, the lot size, uh, the frontage on two fronts, I think we're able to, uh, as Mr. Lewis mentioned, design a, a multi-family building that provides setback relief on the southern, uh, or rear, uh, portion of the lot along the driveway that will allow for a little bit of, uh, light and air uh, to the future tenants, but also some relief, um, for clearances and distances for the driveway. We also are also providing, uh, setbacks, um, along the frontages for the landscaping at the foundation, um, which is, which is a nice improvement. Um, as we get into the upper stories, uh, we do need relief for a D six height variance. Um, that mainly is a test of a site accommodation. So given that we have an oversized lot, uh, we are also incorporating what's referred to as step backs. So we mentioned that on the third floor, we have a six foot step back, um, which was introduced to this version of the project. And then also at the fifteenth store, we have an additional step back and that provides relief from the right of ways. It helps mitigate the viewpoints, but also it just doesn't have the upper floors as a bearing mass along the streetscape. I would also say the change in, um, facade, as Mr. Lewis pointed out, does help, uh, in terms of the visi- visible, visibility of the upper stories. It still creates contrast with the historic structures, uh, first and second floor, but it help, that it helps mitigate the upper stories in terms of the new facade. Um, specifically, we are requesting relief for five stories. Um, the overall height is calculated at sixty-one feet, seven inches. Uh, the R one zone, this is a, a, a standard for one and two family homes. It only permits three stories at thirty-three to, uh, thirty-nine feet. Um, but again, we are proposing not a one or two story family house. We are proposing multi-family use. That's an adaptive reuse project. It's a historic preservation on the first and second floors. Um, so we are, we are requesting relief, um, for the stories and overall height. Um, we did do a shadow study. Uh, I won't bring it up tonight unless any of the commissioners have any specific questions, but given the adjacent properties to the west and, and south, meaning a, um, lot line adjacent structure and a rear, a driveway to the south. Uh, most of the shadows will be cast into the Cambridge and Hutton right of ways. And then there'll be little to no impact on the adjacent structure on Hutton, um, to the west because it already has a lot line, uh, side yard setback or relatively close to being a zero lot line side yard setback. So based on that analysis, um, we don't, we didn't identify any substantial impacts, um, with the light and air and any shadows, uh, created by the additional building height. Um, that's being proposed with the, with the project. Um. We do also request, uh, several bulk variances. Um, so I'll just run through them, but these are all subsumed with the use variance application because they're bulk variances that are established to regulate a one and two family house. So given that we're a multi-family use, uh, this, uh, list is really subsumed within that use variance request. Um, we are requesting to formal relief from, uh, minimum rear yard setback. The five feet along the driveway is proposed where, uh, what's typical, what would be required for a one and two family home is twenty feet. Again, that's uh, along the driveway. So twenty feet is, wouldn't be appropriate in that instance. Um. We are proposing, uh, a front and year, rear yard combined setback of nine feet where thirty-five feet is required. So it's the same five feet in the rear. We are actually proposing the additional setback in the front, um, which is for the lap foundation plantings. Um, on, on the front side of the, the Hutton Street frontage. Uh, we are proposing coverage variances, uh, where eighty-one point four percent of building coverage is proposed, uh, where sixty percent is permitted. So on the ground floor, we are providing the off-street parking and the main entrance to the, the building. Um, so we do need additional building coverage to enclose the parking. Uh, but again, we're providing that relief from the front yard setbacks, front, frontage setbacks as well as the rear yard. And as far as the overall lot coverage, ninety point three percent is proposed where eighty-five percent would be permitted. Um, we're making substantial improvements to the overall property. We're introducing landscaping, street trees and a stormwater management system for the building, um, which will also integrate the green roofs at the upper level. So that, uh, package of, um, pervious elements will help one, improve existing conditions, but also reduce the impact of the building coverage and the lot coverage. Um. I believe that's the direct testimony, um, for the positive criteria. I do also want to say that this application does further purposes of the municipal land use law. So these are special reasons that would help support a use variance. Um, one, uh, we have worked with city planning, the neighborhood, um, to redesign this application to really, uh, make the right adjustments to help further mitigate, um, the proposed multi-family use. So in approval by this board, given all the testimony we've presented, would be an appropriate guidance of development in the state. That's purpose A. Um, we are also, uh, reducing the den unit count from where we initial, initially applied for, which would be establishing an appropriate population density in an appropriate, um, location. That's purpose E. Uh, and lastly, I would say, um, we are also advancing purpose I, which is to promote a desirable visual environment. Um, I, I do believe that these adaptive reuse and historic preservation projects are part of the creative fabric of the architectural design of the city. Uh, we worked on the Palisades Firehouse several years ago. Um, that's a much larger project, but I think it stands as a testament to how the preservation with the addition of residential units helps bring to life some of the historic properties while keeping them, um, uh, preserved and, and maintained. With respect to the negative criteria, um, I don't believe we're propos- we're posing any substantial detriment to the general welfare. Um, we've worked, uh, pretty extensively to provide the appropriate setback and step back relief for the building. Um, we are also introducing all of the pervious, uh, elements with respect to the landscaping, street trees, stormwater management and green roof system. Um, we are also maintaining a, an element of the historic preservation. So that's part of the character of the neighborhood that, that will be able to remain and be preserved with this project. With respect to the master plan, um, we are requesting a use variance, but, um, I don't believe there's an impairment of the master plan and zone plan. It's, it's a residential use in a residential neighborhood. Uh, it's, as I mentioned earlier, it's removing a non-conforming assembly hall on, on the property. Um, with respect to the new master plan, this is certainly meeting the objective to continue effort to enhance residential neighborhoods, promote infill development, development of diverse housing types. So we heard from, um, the architect, the, the range of, of units which are comfortable and, and certainly large enough to accommodate, um, several families. Um, that's my complete testimony. As I get to the end of my notes, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I tried to fill in and not go over too much of what Mr. Lewis, but I do concur with a lot of the points he made in his testimony.
So Harrington, do you have any more, uh, speakers?
No, that, that would conclude, that will conclude our, our presentation. I, I just know for the record that our, our civil engineer and traffic engineer are available for any questions from the board. They, they did submit reports, uh, in support of the application, but um, I'm going to defer, you know, to the board and unless they, they want to hear from them, they, you know, they, they are here, um, for questions.
Do the board members have any questions? Francisco, do we have, um, any, uh, the public have any questions?
Yes, I do see several hands raised. I'm promoting Dan Hazlett.
Hi, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and please state and spell your full name for the record.
Sure. Dan Hazlett, D A N H A Z E L E T T. Okay. All right. I wish I had more than three minutes while I try and make this brief. First of all, Mr. Harrington referred that he consulted with the community. There was no such community meetings. The only thing we've received were the certified letters, which we kept logging into the zoning board meetings. And like that, so the community was halted. Second of all, five story seems too high for this neighborhood. It's going to be an eyesore. And second, you said it was going to be sixty-one feet? That, that only seems like six stories to me. Uh, the problem we have here on Cambridge Avenue, as everybody else has in Jersey City's parking. Now you said you're going to have nine units. You have nine parking spaces. Well, you have families. Don't most families have more than one cars or have? Where, where are they going to park? There's no parking. That's another thing. Uh, I know you addressed about, uh, having sewage, but the sewage in our neighborhood has been constantly bad, especially on that corner. The sewers have been known to black up. And finally, um, I noticed that you went down from fourteen. No, you didn't mention anything about affordable housings. I assume it's not going to be affordable housing. A couple of years ago, this board passed a variance to have the warehouse on Cambridge Avenue between Hutton and Griffith Street renovated into a multi-dwelling, uh, uh, structure much, uh, bigger than this. And right now it's half empty because the people can't afford the rent. So I submit to you as a lifelong Jersey City resident, we want to see the building improved. We want to see our neighborhood improved. But what course are we going to do? We rather uh, affordable housing where we can and not, not give up our city. Uh, I mean, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Cruz. Hi, David, can you show your camera? There you go.
Hello, hello.
Hi Dave, would you raise your right hand to be sworn?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am, a hundred percent.
Thank you. And if you could state and spell your full name for the record.
My name is David Cruz, D A V I D C R U Z.
Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. Hello, everybody. Hello, vice chair. Hello, co-attorneys, everybody. I am the president of the Block Association on Hutten Street. I'm also the chairman of events of the Central Ave City. I've been on the block for twenty-three years. My family owns a business across the street on Central. I also live on the same block on Hutten, on Central. My backyard faces where the project is going to be built. I understand it's going to be nine apartments, nine parking spots. I think it's beautiful project. I think this is so good for the community. And if they're looking for extra parking, if the husband has a car and the wife, there's, the wife has a car, there's a block away, there's a parking lot right there. There's also another parking lot a block and a half away in the Berry King. I have talked to the community because, you know, I'm always with the community, do everything for the community. The community came to me about the project and I told, and I heard what they said and I explained to them. And they love the project, the next door neighbors, my next door neighbors, everybody loves it. I also talked to the M U A to get the sewers on the corner cleaned out. The reason why there's flooding on the other corner now with this project is done is because there was construction debris thrown down there and they fixed it and now it's good. Their backyard faces my backyard. I'm okay with the sunlight. The sunlight comes to my right, sunlight comes to my left, sunlight comes from the top. I am excellent with this project. I wish I am excellent with this project. I wish that there should be more buildings like this. But the height doesn't bother me because Jersey City Heights, it's five floors, it's great. I'm not asking for ten floors, seven floors, six floors, five floors is beautiful. It goes to the same height around the neighborhood. I will not change nothing, nothing at all in this project. I'm a community activist. I live on the block. I'm the one who will be against of anything that if you build a fifteen-story building in the Heights, I'm against that. I'm against no parking, but this got the park, that's everything, everything what a neighbor wants. And also, we heard the other case before this. It was about a restaurant, people with music and this. The elk was all that. It was headaches, people coming out drunk, peeing outside, doing this. Now it's gonna be homes for families. This is good. This brings in new people from Jersey City and also residents that live in Jersey City that wanna move from different parts of the Heights, Greenville, downtown, move in there. So this is an opportunity for people that live in Jersey City to get a change and come to the Heights and enjoy the beautiful restaurants and the beautiful community that we have in the Heights. So to me, this is a perfect project. What's up? How you doing, man?
I'm fine. Time's up.
How's Eric?
Thanks, oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, vice chair.
Promoting Phil. There are currently two more hands that are raised.
Hi, could you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And if you could state and spell your full name for the record.
My full name is Philip Jona, J O N A T. I just wanna, I just wanted to call in and say that I also uh really excited about this building coming in. This is a large, large property that has been uh not, I I don't wanna say neglected, but it's it's just not hasn't looked good for a while and having new new homes in the area would be great for everybody. So I really just wanted to to ha- voice my support for the project. I live a few blocks to the north at the at Congress and um and so looking forward to this building getting built finally. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Promoting Brett Wilson. Yes, can you turn on your video?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Certainly, Brett Wilson, B R E T T W I L S O N.
Thank you.
Thank you. So uh firstly, I want to say the last time around, the planning staff summary that was um given after the public comment. Um honestly, there were comments made that should have been open to the public to respond to afterwards, but um they noted that two properties on Cambridge already set a precedent normalizing the proposed sixty-foot height of this building. Um, you know, one of these buildings is a HUD building, as I understand it, which was built many, many years ago. Um both of these two buildings stick out, but at least one of them provides a uh a benefit to the community. The other is an anomaly and I saw uh commented on by many people that walk by and hopefully it remains an anomaly. Uh, for me, architecturally, there is no continuity between the proposed historic restoration and the proposed addition. Um, the juxtaposition between the two designs is like parking a Tesla in a stable next to a horse. Aesthetically, to me, it makes no sense. Um, the curtain wall will be highly reflective. Um, and the fiber cement system proposed already dated. I mean, it sounds nice when you say fiber cement, but to me, it's today's vinyl siding. Um, regarding one-to-one parking with larger apartments, as as Dan said previously, it's likely that houses are gonna have multiple cars or that occupants are gonna have multiple cars. And also bear in mind, there is no parking on the south side of Hutton directly in front of the uh of the unit. This is police parking only. Um now, uh, many houses on Cambridge, including my own, have been subjected to sewage backflow during storms and not just the hurricanes, you know, a a really strong summer storm can do the same thing. Um, the infrastructure in this area is overtaxed already and does not need the extra burden before the city can make, you know, uh, really needed uh upgrades to it. Um I understand that there's some type of re- retention structure, but uh, you know, I I don't think that that addresses the uh the occupants in the house as well. Um, regarding the green roofing, I I'd like to see the maximum green roofing possible at the expense of amenity areas. I I don't think we need a roof deck in the area. I mean, it's just really an excuse to be able to charge more for the place and off, you know, certainly offer something for the occupants, but it doesn't offer anything for the surrounding communities. Um, you know, the developers paid a lot of money for this property, too much, I'd say, and the only way that they're gonna turn a profit is to build big, which is not allowed. They need a variance for it. And it only benefits the bottom lines, the the investors and, you know, possibly the occupants of this place. It's not right that we residents have to live with this development that we don't want so that a few people can turn a profit. Uh, I mean, developing this into housing is okay, but let's make it smaller. Let's make it something that we can live with. Let's build inside the existing structure. Thank you.
Thank you.
And promoting P H.
Hi, could you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And thank you, and please state and spell your full name for the record.
Uh, yeah, sorry. It's Anthony Harrington, A N T H O N Y, H A R R I N G T O N. Uh, sorry, everybody, my I can't switch my name, but it's on my my business account. But I'm I'm also an architect. I live in the Heights in the neighborhood. Um, uh, hello, Mr. Height, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Harrington. We've all met before and hello to um all the commissioners. Um, I just, uh, I'm not gonna speak about the zoning or the uh the specific grievances that are being requested or the density, although I think it's uh pretty high for this area. Uh, but my my concern uh is about the aesthetics and the the curtain wall system. Um, I'm a eh energy efficiency person at heart and I know that uh doing a curtain wall building was gonna be very difficult to meet the energy code and it makes me nervous about the future of the structure as in its viability. I also think that the addition overwhelms in scale the masonry base of this structure. I greatly appreciate it, uh, the effort to renovate that structure, but I feel like the 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 density of the and the height of the glass addition is more than twice the size. So that's that's my aesthetic assessment. Um, thank you for for letting me comment.
Thank you.
Uh, there is one more hand that was raised. I'm promoting Megan.
Hi, raise your right hand to be sworn, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, and please state and spell your full name for the record.
Uh, Megan Gulick, M E G A N G U L I C K.
Yeah.
Uh, I honestly, I just, I have some questions because why was three forty-five central and why were three fifty-nine central approved with more units than this? Um and I I I just don't understand why why we're having so much trouble with a nine-unit building with one-to-one parking that has been narrowed down to nine units to validate the the density uh issue at hand. Um, I do take issue with one of the neighbors who is saying that they want this building to be just built within that structure, um, cuz I have some history uh with that. And I just, I don't, I don't appreciate like why people are not allowing this to be developed because I lived on that street for eight years and that area is a just a blight on that particular section of the street and it really needs to be developed into something. And these developers are trying to make it something that is family-friendly that is gonna bring in families who are gonna stay here for a long time, hopefully, and become part of the community. And these developers are are not here to just turn a quick profit. If they were, they would have already sold this off to somebody else who was gonna turn it into something else. They, these developers, they live in this area, they invest in this area, and it's just it's really disappointing to see people who are coming out uh pose to it and I just, that's that's it. I think my three minutes are probably almost up, but I'm totally pro this building and it used to just be a warehouse for barefoot wine and uh I would love to see it be something better than that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, there is one more hand that was raised, promoting Jody.
Hi, if you can unmute yourself and raise your right hand. There you go. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure, Jody Shine, J O D I S H E I N.
Thank you.
So I'll be quick. I live on Cambridge exactly across the street from um the site and I look at my window every day. It's a eyesore. Uh, this is a blessing to the area. I I think this is gonna be great and a huge contribution. Um, so I am definitely in favor for this to be built.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. There is one more hand raised. For those who are in the attendees, please raise your hand at this moment if you wish to comment. They declined. Please look. If you do not wish to comment on this application, but you are declining when I promote you. Okay, they're being promoted now.
Hello.
Hello. If you could raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in your this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And if you could state and spell your full name for the record.
Sure. It's Arpita Mendez, A R P I T A Mendez, M E N D E Z.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've lived in the Heights my entire life and um I am very pro this project. I think it's gonna be a really great added addition to the Heights to see what our neighborhood can really do. Um, and what a previous person said, I do believe it's an eyesore. Um, I think getting something developed there is really gonna help our community. Um, I think it's gonna be great for families to come in. I have a daughter and I would love to see more families in this area. Um, I think parking one-to-one is so beneficial and I really think that it's a great property and it's a great project.
Thank you.
And there are no more hands that are raised.
Great, so let's close the public.
Okay.
Hey. Could I, could I have an opportunity just quickly to address a few comments and I'll I'll be very brief?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to re- reiterate that we did uh work with the community and meet with the community. My client met with uh Mr. Paul Amatuzzo at the end of May to um uh uh flush out the design with him and Mr. Amatuzzo uh scheduled um a meeting for us to present to the Persian Field Group uh in June. So we presented to them to them um via Zoom back in in June. Uh, it just took took a while, obviously, to get to the board, um, but but we absolutely uh met with them and that, you know, that went well as as you don't see Mr. Amatuzzo here tonight. Um, as far as the parking, a, you know, one-to-one is the general standard uh in Jersey City, if not less than one-to-one. Um, and no, there's not any affordable housing as part of this. Um, it's only nine units. Uh, the, as as I'm sure the board is aware, there is the I Z O, the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance. That makes a requirement of affordable housing when you do fifteen units or more. This is, this is not, you know, there and it doesn't trigger that. And lastly, you know, Mr. Lewis, I'm sure could support this where um, when you have a historic structure and and um you're adding to it, I I think, you know, the rule of thumb for architecture and the Secretary of Interior Standards is try to distinguish between the two. You don't want to have, like, if you have a brick building, to continue it with brick up top. You wanna, you wanna have the historic part pop. And then and then so the the other, the other part as well. So you distinguish what is old and what is new. So that's, I think, you know, what Mr. Lewis is trying to accomplish here. That's it.
Okay. All right, since there are no more questions, um any comments from the um, so can I have a motion?
We hear staff.
We missed it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Also, do we have comments on this?
This was uploaded. I will be as brief as possible, um, just to reiterate what Mr. Height had uh testified to this uh application is proposing sixty-one units an acre. The previous denied application was ninety-five units an acre. Um, so they are significantly decreasing that. It is the opinion of the staff that applicant meets the following intent of the land use objectives of the Jersey City Master Plan. So to continue efforts to enhance residential neighborhoods to ensure that cities' available housing is balanced and meets the needs of all current and future city residents. It is also the opinion of staff that this proposal advances the following purposes of the zoning uh municipal land use law. Uh, be to secure safety from flood. So roughly fifty percent of the lot currently is occupied by a paved impervious wall, which during heavy downpour sends water into the street and overfills city pipes. The applicant is proposing almost seventy-nine percent of the front yard to be landscaped where sixty percent of is required. And the R one, uh, six trees are being proposed and planted where currently none exist today. A water retention system will be installed in the garage and almost seven hundred square feet of green roof will be added to mitigate rainwater. Uh, it speaks to purpose E to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities and regions um and to preserve the environment. So in terms of positive criteria, the proposal restores a residential use to the property. Um, the proposed multifamily use is appropriate for the oversized nature of the lot. Um, as far as the negative criteria, the existing non-conformalities help validate that the use is not out of character for the neighborhood. Uh, the commercial quarter of Central Ave will benefit from the increase increased density of the proposal, um, and therefore the benefits outweigh those detriments. It speaks to purpose J to promote the conservation of historic sites. So the applicant is proposing an element of historic preservation and they will continue to work with city planning as well as historic stuff. Um, I did wanna show the board uh the neighborhood density map. Like, as you can see, those that, those lots that are highlighted in red, uh, these are lots that are sixty-five plus uh dwelling units an acre. And you can see highlighted here, this is the site. This is sixty-one units an acre, whereas uh, the lots on Cambridge on this side are roughly anywhere from, let me scroll down, anywhere from a hundred and thirty-one to one hundred and ten, these two. Um, and it roughly matches what the area currently exists, will currently exist in the neighborhood. Uh, it is the staff's opinion that the lot can handle the proposed amount of intensity on the existing lot. Additionally, um, it was previously addressed that the lot is near the N C, neighborhood commercial zone. Uh, the neighborhood commercial zone permits five stories and fifty-five feet with residential above ground and five stories and sixty-four feet uh for buildings without residential apartments on the ground floor. Therefore, a five-story, sixty-one-foot structure is both appropriate and compatible with the western contents of the block as well. The surrounding neighborhood is mixed. It has um mixed uses and mixed heights. It also contains industrial It also contains industrial buildings um between residential housing and the residential uses pretty much vary from one to and uh two multifamily buildings. The highest building in the immediate area is ten stories. Um, however, there are a few other five-story buildings in the immediate area. Uh, the applicant is providing one-to-one parking ratio. Uh, they also are providing five par, five bicycle parking spaces. And additionally, the property is point seven miles, so less than a mile away from the Second Street Light Rail. Not to mention the frequent bus service along Central and Palisade Avenue. Um, this speaks to the fact that the lot can handle the amount of intensity on the existing lot. Therefore, staff sees no substr, no substantial impairment of the intent of the R one height limitations. Should the variances be granted and in the event a motion is made to approve this application, staff does recommend approval with the conditions outlined in my memo, which uh Mr. Harrington is in receipt.
Thank you, Francisco.
And for the record, those conditions would be acceptable.
Okay. With that said, may I have a motion?
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve K Z two zero two three dash zero 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 seven as presented to the board this evening.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I second.
To approve Commissioner Allen.
Uh, nice re, excuse me, nice redesign. I vote yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zabliki?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadie?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
And Vice Chair.
Yeah, I think everybody, I think the, there was a lot of concession and uh they really made an effort to align the project to the wishes of the community, so I say yes.
Which carries all in favor with.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, by the way, uh, um uh, we have to make sure that uh there is no cases heard about ten o'clock. So this case should be the last one.
Okay, so let's go to case Z twenty-two zero five eight. Uh, preliminary and final major site plan with a C and D variance. Address is eighty-four, eighty-six and eighty-eight Beacon Avenue and the attorney is Benjamin Wine.
Voting Benjamin Wine. Mr. Lewis, are you a part of Benjamin Wine's team?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Wine.
He doesn't want to leave.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, Aruho, uh, and Commissioners. I hope everybody's doing well this evening. Um, first off, I want to take the opportunity to thank the board for hearing our application um before they heard our application. And uh, what I, what I will intend to present to you is what we believe is uh hopeful, and hopefully you'll agree, a very good preliminary and final major site plan application for the property located at eighty-four to eighty-eight Beacon Avenue. The block and lot for the record are block five, seven, zero, five, lots twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, and we are in the R one zone. This site is somewhat of an anomaly. Uh, our lot size is rather large for the R one zone. It's actually rather large for most zones at eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-one square feet or just over a fifth of an acre. This is a corner lot, as I indicated, uh, that is larger than the average lot size in Jersey City, and we front on both Beacon Avenue and Oakland Avenue. And as you'll see, this general area consists of a mix of uses and buildings, including, or specifically this site, including a large open-air commercial parking garage. You'll see as we get you familiar with the site, uh, what I'm referring to. But basically what's on the site today um is not something that is uh, is, is certainly a positive for the area. And again, I believe the project, and I hope you'll agree, um, is a vast improvement there too. The subject property is currently improved with several buildings, including a one-story commercial warehouse building that, as I said, serves somewhat open-air parking. There is not really a roof on that. There's also a two-story, three-unit residential building and another two-story, two-unit residential building. A little bit of background that initially we began this journey approximately two years ago, proposing what was then a five-story building that consisted of twenty-eight dwelling units with seventeen parking spaces. Despite meeting with city planning and moving that plan forward, we did embark on a series of community meetings with the neighborhood, including the Pershing Field Neighborhood Association and then ultimately the Sergeant Anthony Park Neighborhood Association, which I'll get to shortly. Over the course of those meetings, the general sentiment was that the height and density at five stories and twenty-eight units was a little bit too much for this corner. And at that point, we reduced the fifth story to make it a half-fifth story and dropped the unit count to twenty-four units. We also at that point made significant changes to the architecture and materials and even added a small artist's display. We continued to meet with the community, again, not wanting to proceed to this board this evening until we felt that we had done what was appropriate to satisfy several members of the community. We even did a site visit recently with a couple of members of the Sergeant Anthony Park Neighborhood Association. And ultimately, what you'll see this evening, we entirely eliminated the fifth story, creating a true four-story building at the corner. And we dropped the unit count to eighteen, so we went from twenty-eight to twenty-four down to eighteen. Nevertheless, we still maintain the seventeen parking spaces. I also want to indicate that we increased the artist's display area. There was actually one, one lady from uh, from the community at one of the meetings that mentioned she herself is an, is an artist and liked the idea of the small display we had and actually asked us if there's any way we can make a bunch of artist displays. So we took a look at it and we did just that. We also have an opportunity to add two affordable housing units to this area. Um, one of them notably, we are proposing to be a three-bedroom unit, uh, again, consistent with the COA requirements and your inclusionary zoning ordinance. Lastly, when my client did meet on-site with members of Sergeant Anthony Park Neighborhood Association, there was a request to add some additional greenery in front of the garage entrance. Regrettably, we weren't able to do it ahead of this meeting, but I can assure you that we certainly intend to do that and our architect will speak to that. And that would be perfectly appropriate to us as a condition of any approval. So without further ado, I have three witnesses that I intend to call this evening. I have our civil engineer who prepared the site plan. I have our project architect who's gone through multiple iterations of the plans that you'll see, and then I have our project planner. Um, I also do have obviously our applicant and I do have our traffic engineer available on what I'll call standby in case there are any questions. But uh, the first three are the witnesses I intend to call. So Madam Vice Chair Aruho, unless you have any questions of me, um, I'm happy to uh proceed straight with my first witness.
Before you do that, Mr. One, let's, let's just make sure we have your notices on the record. So we have your affidavit, your notice of, and proof of service. So Bridget will mark that as A one in evidence for this application.
Okay, one moment. This will be A one in evidence. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. One, the show is yours.
Perfect, thank you very much. So my first witness will be Mark Chisvet, and I do see him here. So Mark, if you can uh raise your right hand, and I think uh Bridget is going to get you sworn in.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And if you can state and spell your full name for the record?
Mark, M A R K, Chisvet, C H I S V E T T E.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mark, uh, if you can please go ahead and give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background and the status of your license as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Mr. Chivetz has been before this board a number of times. We've already recognized his expertise and as long as his license is in good standing.
It is.
Then, then.
Okay, thank you. All right, if you allow me to share my screen. I'll start with just an aerial view of the site as you're looking at the site here. North is at the top of the page. The site is outlined in red. It incorporates three existing buildings. There's a, a lot of paved area in here. Um, it's hard to see from the aerial view, but there's actually a facade wall. I'll show you that in the street view in a moment. But you could see that it's at the corner of Beacon Avenue and Oakland Avenue. And um, I'm going to, these are, these are, um, by the way, these, these images are, I don't believe they're in the submission, so we might need to mark these.
Yes, I think we should do that and, and uh, Mr. La Paglia, I'll defer to you, but uh, we can mark them since they're three separate sheets as.
It's one aerial and two str, uh, street view images, total of three pages.
A two and then of three, it'll be three pages.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, one moment. So this will be A two, A, B and C?
Correct.
Perfect.
Okay, that will be marked for in evidence.
Okay, so this, this is the uh, s- street view from Beacon Avenue frontage and you can see the building. Even though there is no building here, there's a facade wall. It looks like a warehouse building from the street. It's got one man door and two fairly large, two man doors rather, and two fairly large overhead doors. Um, inside these doors is just area that's used for construction vehicle parking. And then I'm gonna just show you another, again, these, these two views are courtesy of Google, but they are accurate representation of what's on the site. There, you can see one of the buildings that fronts on Oakland Avenue. Again, this is just a facade, but behind this wall is just a concrete uh, or asphalt parking area for vehicles. And you can see that the building is just a more or less a barren brick, uh, not a very pretty, pretty facade. Um, and you can see also in the foreground, the sidewalk is a little bit in disrepair, weeds growing through it. Uh, there is, there are crosswalks here, there are two handicap ramps. It is a signalized intersection. Uh, just to get yourself some bearing on this, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to the site plan. Um, and I will, this is, this has been submitted. This is our drawing C three in a package of, of simple plans that have been submitted previously. I will zoom in a little bit so that you can get a better view of the uh, the layout of the ground floor parking garage, which will have a driveway eighteen feet wide is proposed for the garage door um at, along the um Beacon Avenue front. It's just a pretty close to a match to where the existing, um, when I showed you this photo, this, this garage door is almost exactly in the same location as the proposed driveway uh and the proposed garage door for the, for the parking. There are uh seventeen proposed parking spaces, uh, twenty-two foot aisle uh is proposed. Uh, you, uh, Mr. Bellamy testifies, you will hear that this, this, that is a, a deviation where twenty-four is required. Uh, but your ordinance does say that um, when you have nine-foot wide parking spaces, you only need a twenty-two foot aisle. And also these, the spaces on the left side are nine foot wide. We do have some compact spaces on the right side. And so technically, you do, you, by, by the zoning, you would need a twenty-four foot aisle because these are not nine feet wide, but since they are compact spaces, a compact vehicle would not really need the full twenty-four foot aisle and to maneuver in and out of the garage. So I, 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 my opinion that the twenty-two foot aisle is more than adequate for, for the uh use of this garage the way it is laid out. Uh, the uh, just to give you more of a site layout, uh, the lobby, the main lobby for the um, the building is off on, about midway into the frontage on Oakland uh Avenue. Uh, we are proposing um all-new sidewalk, all-new curb on both frontages. Um, we are proposing six street trees. Uh, of those six street trees, uh, we, based on the ordinance, we would need eight. Um, but we, there's just because of the utilities that are there, there's no space for that. So we are proposing to uh donate the equivalent of two more trees to meet, meet the requirements of the ordinance. Uh, also, uh, this is all new sidewalk. This also along the entire frontage of Oakland. We are proposing a band of pervious pavers be immediately behind the curb. Um, so that's an improvement that'll help the drainage in the area. Uh, oh, there is a setback on the westerly side of the building. It varies from three-point-one to five-point-one feet uh in, in width. And this serves as a bio-retention area. All the roof runoff will discharge into this and then get collected into another drain that will bring that water. And I'll show you, I'll flip to this page C five, which is our drainage plan. And you can see this is bio-retention area. The water discharges from the roof at this point, it collects in another pipe at this point and it is brought to the main on Beacon Avenue. Uh, this project is a major development under your definition and it will be designed to satisfy the requirements of a major development in meaning that it will reduce runoff from the two to ten and the hundred-year storms. I will flip to the lighting plan, which is C four of our set. And uh, we are proposing to light the entire uh, all the sidewalk uh along the frontage with wall-mounted uh signs, uh, light fixtures rather. And um, they uh are designed to provide the minimum one-foot candle along all of the uh public sidewalk area. Uh, we all, we will reconstruct the handicap ramps that are aligned with the existing crosswalks. And uh, I, I think that, oh, there, there will be, um, I should mention, you'll, you'll hear more from, when you hear from Rob Waldron discussing the uh, the building itself, but there will be over three thousand square feet of green roof in addition to the bio-retention and a small strip of landscaping that we are proposing along the rear of the property. This, the property is not exactly ninety-degree angle. So there's a, a tapering strip in, behind the building that will be landscaped, combination of, of plantings in Riverstone. So between the combination of the green roof and the proposed plantings and the bio-retention, we are nearly quadrupling the amount of green area that is presently on this site. And it's tight now presently is ninety percent paved or concrete or rooftop. Uh, unless you have any questions, uh, I know it's getting late, so with the interest of time, I will uh let uh Rob take over the big presentation.
Yeah, Mark, just one question because you mentioned the curb cut and then I'll, I'll move along to Rob. So there are currently, I think, two curb cuts today. Um, you indicated we're removing one and slightly relocating, I'll call the other one. But um, just to confirm as well, there was a comment that we received in, uh, it'll come up in Cam's staff report, but it ultimately comes from the transportation engineering in the city uh requesting that the curb cut that we are keeping um, cat, should be reduced from eighteen-point-six-seven down to twelve feet. Um, and you, you take no issue with complying, right?
I have no issue with that. And we are proposing a, a uh audible and visual warning device on that garage door. So uh, when it does open for a vehicle to exit the building, any pedestrians that are in the vicinity will be warned that, that a car might would be coming out.
Okay, so that notation would be changed, obviously, should this application be approved, that that will be reduced to twelve.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so Madam Vice Chair, I have nothing further for this witness at this point.
So who's your next witness?
Sure. Oh, if you'd like to move straight along. Sure. So that would be Rob Waldron, who's our project architect.
Now this week with the Foo Fighters, or should we say Foo Fighters?
Okay, maybe uh, we can mute there. Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and please state and spell your full name for the record.
Robert Waldron, R O B E R T W A L D R O N.
Thank you.
All right, and Rob, uh, if you can, I mean, unless Mr. La Paglia would uh, would like to take your word for it, if you can give the board the benefit of your credentials, um, and the status of your license as an architect.
I'm not sure if Mr. Waldron has been here before, have you?
I have not. I've appeared in front of the planning board, but I have not appeared in front of the zoning board.
Well, they've accepted you as an, as a, as an expert there and your license is still still in good form.
Yes.
We'll accept your credentials as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Um, we are currently proposing a four-story multifamily building with eighteen dwelling units. Uh, three will be one-bedroom units, including one affordable. You know what? I'm gonna share my screen. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so three will be one-bedroom units, uh, including one affordable unit. Twelve will be two-bedroom units and three will be uh, three-bedroom units, including one affordable unit. We're providing seventeen parking spaces and eighteen bike spaces. On our ground floor, as Mark stated, we are entering the garage off of Beacon to seventeen indoor parking spaces in the garage and eighteen bike spaces as well. The lobby can be accessed from the garage as. The lobby can be accessed from the garage as well as off of Oakland Avenue. And uh, the gym and lounge are directly off the lobby. On every floor, you'll see there's two egress stairs and an elevator. And on this ground floor, we have a trash room and two utility rooms. On the second floor, which would be our first residential floor, we have a total of six units, one one bedroom, four two bedroom and one three bedroom unit. Uh, the three bedroom unit will be on this corner here, on the corner of uh Beacon and Oakland. And on this floor, this will be uh, an affordable unit. We have a one bedroom unit along Oakland here and a two bedroom unit at the end uh along Oakland. Along the west side here, we have three uh two bedroom units, all which have private roof terrace areas. Uh, and they have a landscape buffer along the edge there. In order to create these uh roof terraces, we step the building back an additional seven feet at this level. Again, you'll see the two egress stairs, the elevator and a uh trash room. Moving up to the third floor, uh, it is an identical layout to the second floor where we have six units, one one bedroom, four two bedroom and one three bedroom unit. Uh, the only change you will see here is this one bedroom here along Oakland is uh marked as an affordable unit. And now we have transitioned from the roof terraces on the second floor to balconies uh on the third floor. On the fourth floor, which are our final floor, uh, again, we have the same unit layout with six total units, one one bedroom, four two bedroom and one three bedroom. And everything is consistent along with maintaining those balconies on that western side. Uh, on the roof, we have uh extremely nice roof terraces set up here for uh, five of the units will have private roof terraces and we have one common roof terrace here uh on this section. They will all be, have access to both the egress stairs and the elevator. You also see we've designated two small mechanical areas uh that will be screened. The Beacon Ave and Oakland Ave uh elevations will be a mixture of brick and metal panel. Uh, you'll see on each end, we have three stories of brick uh here on Beacon as well as uh on Oakland. And then we transition to metal panel on the corners and also on the top floor. You'll see uh very large uh windows in all the units. And on the ground floor, we have uh our main lobby entrance here with uh large storefront windows for that ground floor lounge. Uh, and here is our uh garage door. As Ben mentioned in, in the opening statement there, we have three uh art displays that will be used uh to display local art. I've done this on a previous project, I think it's been successful. Uh, we did increase them based on community feedback, there'll be one located here uh on each side of the garage door as well as here on Oakland Avenue. The materials will be a light gray to light tan brick and a light metal panel with black metal panel accents. Uh, and we have a rendering at the end, which I, I think will be a little bit more clear on the materials there. On the north elevation, we have a brick base uh with metal panel above. And you're able to see this uh additional seven foot step back here where we provided a roof terrace, roof terraces and balconies here. And on the west elevation, again, we continue that nice brick base with cast stone detailing. Uh, the roof terraces will be behind this parapet wall. And you can see uh the balconies provided along that, all those units along the west side. Here are some of the blowups of uh the elevations, you can start to see some of the metal panel, cast stone detailing, soldier coursing over the windows. Um, here's one of the uh local art displays that will uh have art lights. So uh at night they'll also be illuminated. We have our lobby entrance here and uh what I think is a very nice connection from inside the building to the street of uh all these storefronts. Um, right on the corner of Beacon and Oakland uh for a connection to that lounge. Here's a section of the building, you can see the garage, the ground level with the amenities. This seven foot step back for the roof terraces and balconies, the three floors of residential. Uh, some of the roof terraces up here as well as the uh roof bulkheads that would be set back from uh the perimeter of the, the building. These images are similar to what Mark had shown before, just the knock rate condition of uh the existing buildings that are located there now. And then finally, uh, we have the rendering where you can start to see the brick at three levels here on the end uh on Beacon as well as on Oakland. And then we open it up with metal panel on the corner and also on the fourth floor here. You can really see the nice large windows that are provided. Uh, the local art displays along here on the uh ground floor level. Uh, the entry lobby, uh, and again, what I, I think is gonna be a very nice connection between community and building uh with this lounge with all the storefront windows. Um.
Sure, and Rob, just not to cut you off, but uh we should, we should have this marked as an exhibit as I don't believe this was submitted.
Correct.
So I think we're up to A three.
Yes.
Okay, one moment, this will be A three marked into evidence.
Right, I'm sorry, Rob, you can go ahead.
I actually think that basically sums it up.
Okay, so I can just.
Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, one follow-up for you, um, again, as I indicated in my opening, but there was a request to your understanding to add a little bit more greenery, first of all, we'll reduce the curb cut shown in the rendering, but to add some more greenery around the garage opening, um, you, you see no issue, you know, working to have that accomplished as well, is that correct?
Yes, we, we did show some indication of that on the uh rendering here. Uh, to my understanding, it was requested on both sides of the garage door and then as well on both sides of the uh lobby entrance, so we showed that on the elevation and we have no problem adding that to the site plan.
Okay. All right, so Madam Vice Chair, that concludes my uh direct examination of Mr. Waldron.
I just have a quick question because I, I need to ask this. Are these trees going to be there, I, um, that, that, that tall? Or they're gonna be shorter? Because I, I don't know, to me, it would seem like they will obstruct the vision of, of when those, when the cars are coming out of the garage, if you have all that, those tree, because they'll start growing and, and branching out. Um, I'm just assuming that may obscure the uh cars coming in and out. That's, you know, that will be a safety pattern.
Are you referring to the two potted plants here or the larger trees that are?
No, the large trees. I think after a while they will branch out and I, I'm just wondering if that gonna obscure any kind of cars coming in and out from the garage. Uh, you know, and having also the traffic coming in and out.
Um, I, I think I actually might be able to address that best and that's a condition of planning, uh, the planning staff memo is to revise the street tree species and the species that they've been revised to are all smaller what arborists call understory trees. Um, all of them are deciduous and they would lose their leaves in the winter, um, improving visibility. But they are on the shorter side as far as tree growth goes, typically only growing to like around seventeen feet tall. Um, so I, I think that would probably answer your question. That the species that will be planted there will be likely smaller than that.
I see, okay, that, yes, that answered my question, thank you. Okay, do you have another, um?
Yeah. So as, sure, so as I mentioned, um, my traffic engineer is available if needed. Um, but otherwise, my last witness I intend to call is Sam Bellamy, our project planner. And I see him there.
Okay. He's on the screen, we've recognized him before as an expert and uh soon as he's sworn in, as long as he tells us his license is in good order, you can start your direct examination. Bridgette?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could please state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure, Samuel Bellamy, first name S A M U E L, last name Bellamy, B E L L A M Y. And I am a licensed professional planner with the firm, Justin and Robin, and my license is current in a good standing in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just confirm that the board will accept Mr. Bellamy. And I see Mr. La Paglia nodding, so.
Yes.
Correct, it is at least tacit approval. Um, all right, so with that, uh, Sam, you've heard the, the testimony provided by our engineer and our architect with respect to the proposed four-story uh eighteen unit building at the eighty-four Beacon site. Um, so I'll just ask you to walk through your uh, your planning presentation and the proofs that you would have in support of the variance relief that we have.
Sure, and I'll really focus in on the um variances being requested tonight. Um, we are seeking a D one use variance as this is a multifamily building being proposed in the R one, one and two family district. Um, that district predominantly permits um single and two-family homes. Um, so with the proposed eighteen unit residential building, that is a use variance. Um, as you heard on the prior application, the testimony from Mr. Height, um, the proofs for a D one use variance are predominantly site suitability. Um, so as I walk through my presentation, you'll, you'll hear that this site is particularly well-suited for the proposed multifamily use. Um, as Mr. Wine said in his opening, um, this, this process has been about two years now. Um, when we first started this project and I had the, the privilege of being on early on, um, when we were going through concepts, um, it was about the same time that the city was going through their master planning process, um, which also included the small area vision plan for the lower heights, which is the surrounding area that this property is located in. Um, so really the onset of this project timed up nicely with um, those visiting documents and the direction that the city was heading. Um, so we really were able to design with those goals and objectives in mind, um, that the community was coming up with. Um, so uh, a- as I said by both our architect and engineer, the site is currently developed um, with an existing non-conforming, commercial, industrial, open air, um, storage yard. Um, and there's also a, a two-family and a three-family building on the property. Um, so together, there's, there's five units, multifamily, and there's also a non-conforming industrial, commercial use. Um, so by transitioning this property to the multifamily building, I think we are bringing it into closer conformance with the zoning. Um, we're introducing a completely residential building in a residential zoning district in a residential neighborhood. Um, so I think we're actually taking a more intense commercial industrial use um, and bringing it into something in, more in line with what the zoning calls for. Um, as Mr. Wine said, this property is also substantially um large, larger than a typical R one district lot. We're at eight thousand eight hundred twenty-one square feet, that's over three times the, the, your typical twenty-five hundred square foot lot. Um, in addition, this is a corner lot location. Um, and this is a north-south corridor um in the heights um of Jersey City. I would like to introduce um an aerial exhibit. Um, it's a little bit uh zoomed out from the aerial exhibit that our engineer prepared. Um, I believe we have to mark this as a A four.
Yep, Bridgette, that would be A four.
Okay, one moment. Okay, this will be marked A four for this implication in evidence.
Thank you, and it's an aerial exhibit prepared by Justin and Robin dated with today's date, October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Um, we'll start with the image on the left here, you can see our site outlined with the red outline. Um, it's on Oakland Avenue and Beacon Avenue. Um, as you could see on this corridor, there, there's several um larger multifamily buildings at the corner, you have a a multifamily building at the corner of Oakland and St. Paul's, and then you have the Laylaw Lost a block north, um, which is a five-story and this building's four-story. You also have a, the four-story school building, um, and then there was recently a project approved um, down here on Route one and nine and Fleet Street at the corner that transitions from six-story to four-story, so on, on the corner properties, the larger properties, um, you do see some of these larger multifamily buildings, um, which we were designing to, to align with here. Um, shifting over to the image on the right, there's also some four and a half story, um, older multifamily buildings. They're centered in the block here, along Beacon Avenue, you have one, and then on the other side over here. So there are some um four-story multifamily buildings. Um, predominantly, they're located on the corners and larger properties, so again, that, that kind of speaks to the site suitability and what we were designing for um with this project. Um, we also did take a look at the surrounding densities in the area. Um, and in addition to the one and two-family homes that are, that are surrounding, there's also a number of multifamily buildings. Um, they range from uh sixty-one units acre up to two hundred thirteen units per acre. We're proposing eighteen units at, on a point-two acre lot. Um, so that calculates uh approximately eighty-nine units per acre. So overall, I think we're, we're towards the lower end of the density of the multifamily buildings in the area and, and consistent with that development pattern. Again, that, that does speak overall to the size of the lot here, um, that is substantially large for an R one district lot. Um, you also heard from our engineer that we are providing a, a seventeen space um, ground floor parking garage, um, a double-loaded parking garage, again, due to the overall size of the lot, we can accommodate that. So we're, we're just under one space per unit, point nine four spaces per unit, so again, um, an adequate number of parking spaces further supports the particular suitability of the site for, for a multifamily use. We do promote several of the purposes of the municipal land use law. Again, I think this is an appropriate use and development of the property that will, will promote the general welfare. That's consistent with purpose A, again, this is a multifamily building um, consistent with the residential nature of the surrounding area. And the density is also consistent with the density of the surrounding area. Um, promoting the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations. Um, that promotes the, uh, contributes to the well-being of the area, consistent with purpose E. Um, I think our architect did a good job describing the building and explaining the context. Um, so I, I do feel that we are promoting a desirable visual environment consistent with purpose I. Again, we're, we're moving a current um non-conforming industrial kind of blank wall with the, the roll-up doors, replacing it with a um multifamily building that really engages with the street with the, with the windows at the corner. Um, so I think that will significantly improve the streetscape and really anchor the corner here of, of Beacon and Oakland Avenue. Um, we are requesting um some bulk variance relief. Um, overall, I'll say that with a use variance, there are bulk standards in the R one district that are applicable to one and two-family homes. Again, since we're asking for a use variance, those bulk variances really are subsumed within that use variance. Um, we are requesting a height variance and it's a D six variance. Um, we're proposing four stories, forty-six point three-three feet, um, where a maximum of three stories and thirty-nine are permitted um, for flat roof buildings in the R one district. Again, the, the significantly larger lot really allows for a, a larger building, uh, again, being on a corner property. Um, we, we feel that a four-story building is appropriate, is in context with the surrounding area um, and really would anchor this corner lot location. Um, our project architect described the, the different um materials being used. Uh, we are proposing the accent metal um panel material on the fourth story. Um, from an urban design perspective, that kind of helps to um to mitigate the, the additional story feel, that it's a softer feel at the top. Uh, so that's a design approach that, that we use to kind of help mitigate um the additional height that we're proposing. Um, I'll see collectively about the, the bulk of the building. Um, so we're proposing a building coverage of approximately ninety-four percent. Um, the building coverage does decrease on the upper floors to just under eighty-five percent. Um, really, the, the ground floor garage is, is what requires the additional coverage there. Um, but on the spaces that aren't being covered, um, you heard from our engineer are gonna be used as a rain collection and rain garden area, so um, from a visual standpoint, that, that improves the. So, um, from a visual standpoint, that, that improves the characteristics of the lot. Um, but it also helps manage any stormwater runoff from the proposed building. Um, I'm going to pull up the architectural plans as I, as I speak towards the, um, the setbacks being proposed. Bear with me. Um, this is sheet four of the architectural plan set. Um, so this is the upper stories of, of the building. Um, as you could see, our, our setback, uh, uh, from the side property line is, it ranges from ten feet a- along Beacon Avenue to, um, approximately twelve feet in the back here. Um, so we are introducing a, a, a larger side yard setback um, along this property line that really opens up to the, the rest of the block and, and that interior of the block, which allows for light air and open space to access the other rear yards. Um, we're proposing zero-foot front yard setbacks, which do match both the, uh, both sides of the building on Beacon and Oakland. Um, both buildings do have zero-foot setbacks. And along here, we do have a approximately two-foot s- side yard setback in the front that narrows down to zero. Um, this building built on or a little bit off the property line. So, um, really, we're completing a com- complete streetscape on, on the corner here, um, while still providing for light air and open space interior to the block here. But I think, do think that the, the bulk of the building is appropriate, given the corner lot location, and we'll continue to maintain light air and open space. Um, flipping to, uh, sheet, sheet two of this plan set, um, there are a couple of variances related to the, the parking layout. Um, as you heard, we are reducing our curb cut to approximately twelve feet. Um, the, the garage door will remain at eighteen feet and driveway, and then we are proposing a twenty-two-foot, um, drive aisle here. Um, ten feet permitted for the curb cut driveway, um, and garage door. We think the little additional space that we're asking for really allows for, um, appropriate maneuverability in and out of the garage, um, providing for additional safety, um, for vehicles and pedestrians walking by. Um, as you heard from our engineer, twenty-two feet is appropriate to a- accommodate the maneuverability into and out of spaces. I don't, I don't see that as being an issue. Um, and we are proposing two EV spaces. I don't, I'm not sure if that was mentioned yet. We are reducing the curb cuts from two to one. Um, we're also removing the curb cut that was closer to the corner. So again, that allows for a little bit more visibility um, as cars are turning onto Beacon Avenue and, um, either, cars either entering or exit the garage. Um, moving on, I, I, I really don't see any substantial detriment to the general welfare here. Again, I think we're, um, we're improving the general welfare by removing the existing non-conforming use on the property. Um, we, we are also proposing, um, two affordable housing units consistent with the I Z O. Um, again, I think the proposed building massing and, and incorporated setbacks, um, do allow for light air and open space. And with the addition of landscaping, the stormwater detention system and green roofing, um, I think we're improving the stormwater conditions on the property. Likewise, I, I don't see a substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance again here. Um, at the beginning of my testimony, I did, I did speak a little bit about the, our consistency with the small area vision plan. Um, there are several goals that we are looking at that I think we're promoting with this development. Some of the goals we're limiting, um, uh, are focused in higher intensity development up to five stories on north-south corridors. Again, at four stories, with the density we're proposing on a north-south corridor, I think we're directly in line with that goal and that recognition that corner lot locations can accommodate taller buildings, increased density. Um, so we're, we are consistent with that, and we're consistent with the goal of providing for the appropriate setbacks and coverage. Um, and then we're limiting development interior of the lot. So I, I think we're, um, we're directly in line with those goals of the small area vision plan. I think we're in line with the, the purposes of R one district, um, by pr- proposing a multifamily use. Um, and, and this board does have the ability to grant, uh, D one use variances, I said, for lots that are particularly well-suited, which in my professional opinion, this spot is. Um, the I Z O was added to your land development ordinance for, um, projects that are requesting use variance over fifteen units. So it is required on this project and we are complying with that. But I think that speaks to a little bit of this, this site is particularly well-suited. Um, and with that, we are adding affordable housing in line with, um, what your ordinance states. Um, above and beyond that, we're completely improving the streetscape here, adding all-new street trees, adding street lighting, improving Stacy at the corner, um, adding the artist's display. So I think there's a lot of positive aspects with this application. Um, and overall, all the positives of the, the application would substantially outweigh any detriments here. With that, I, I do think this project meets both the positive and negative criteria. Unless Mr. Wine has anything he would like me to, to touch on, that would conclude my direct testimony.
I do not. Thank you, uh, Mr. Bellamy. So Madam Vice Chair, that concludes my direct presentation. I would just ask, uh, respectfully for the opportunity to sum up and/or, uh, respond to any comments from the board or public.
Absolutely. Um, do we have any questions from the board? Uh, Cisco, do we have any, um, any, any, um, polls from the public?
There is one hand that is raised.
Okay.
Promoting Renu. You're on mute.
Yeah, hi.
Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And if you could state and spell your full name for the record?
Renu Sharma, R E N U, first name, S H A R M A, last name.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Miss. Renu.
Yeah. Hey, uh, so, uh, listening to all the presentation, it looks a very beautiful project. I live in seventy-five Beacon Avenue, right across my, the street this building is coming up. I have been living in Jersey City from two thousand and six. For the last sixteen years, I have been seeing that place as is. When we are walking to Persingfield for evening walk, that place was not very eye-pleasing. So I hope that this building will definitely bring the area, make the area beautiful. And of course, I will be pleasing. So it will be a pleasing area to look into. And as, um, the presentation said that there are other buildings, it will not be a single-standing multifamily building. However, there is building in Leyd Law, St. Paul's, and something is coming up between Fleet and one-thirty-nine. And this, this, this kind of multifamily, uh, buildings will definitely bring addition to our neighborhood. And if I talk commercially, uh, homeowners like two-family, three-family homeowners like me will also be benefited commercially when such building come around the area. And yeah, I'm very happy that, uh, our neighborhood is growing, coming up with such, uh, buildings. More different people will come, live, there will be, the community will be more diverse, and we all will be benefited with this. And it looks, it will give some greenery addition because there is now no plants, nothing. And it, as I said, it's not eye-pleasing right now to see that part. But yes, this building will definitely be an addition to the area.
Thank you so much for your comment. Do we have any staff? And thank you so much, Francisco. Do we have any, um?
There's one more hand. We're promoting the laws.
Are you? Okay.
Hmm.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And if you could state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure. It's Anthony Harrington, A N T H O N Y, H A R R I N G, two N.
Thank you.
Um, so hi again, I'm Anthony. Uh, hello, uh, Commissioner. Um, I live at seventy-four Jefferson Avenue. I'm a licensed architect.
I'm, I'm sorry. Slow down a little because I didn't get what you just said.
Oh, I'm, I'm a licensed architect and I live at seventy-four Jefferson Avenue, a couple of blocks away. Um, I'm also the secretary for the Sergeant Anthony Park Neighborhood Association. Um, so we met with, uh, the developer, our vendor, about this project. Um, he listened to our concerns and, and lowered the height. I think he also talked to, um, Pershing Field Neighbor Association about this issue with Mr. Wine. Um, and, uh, the only thing I wanted to bring up was, um, we had asked if he would mind, uh, reseating the, the glass curtain wall in the corner here a little bit. Uh, it's a fairly tight pedestrian area. It looks like it was a non-structural wall from the curtain wall situation. So he said he would, uh, bring it up with the architect. Um, because there's also a, a signal box there. Um, I think my larger questions are for, not, maybe not the commission, but for zoning in general. Um, the, the projects along, um, Oakland that have been getting approved are quite large. Um, Oakland's not a very, uh, substantial corridor, and I think the argument is a little bit thin on that front. It's only about ten blocks long. Um, so, uh, I wish that, I wish, then speaking to Tanya here, I wish that zoning would take a stronger stance about corridors and either upzone the whole corridor so there's more consistency amongst the, the massing and strategies for developers along these areas. Or, you know, stick with R one. Uh, either way, I think is fair, just to wish there was more, um, like a heavy-handed approach from zoning. That's my two cents. But thank you. I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you. Okay.
And that concludes the hands that are raised.
Okay. And I have staff input?
Hey, good evening, Commissioners. Um, Cameron, I'm the review planner tonight, uh, for the city on this application. Um, so I'll just start by saying, uh, planning staff agrees with the testimony provided by the professional planner that the applicant has hired for this case. Uh, Mr. Bellamy, uh, has addressed the positive and negative criteria and, um, uh, has, has addressed why, um, this could be a particularly well-suited, uh, site for this development. Um, uh, one thing I will, uh, draw attention to again that Mr. Bellamy touched upon, um, briefly, was that on this block, there, uh, is one-hundred Beacon, um, which has, uh, the same four-story structure, um, flat roof, uh, seventeen units, and it's fifty by one-hundred. So it's, uh, considerably less, um, but basically the same unit count and no parking. Um, this development is offering, uh, affordable units, um, which helps, uh, reconcile with our master plan and its recommendations for, um, a diverse spread of, uh, unit types across the city. Um, and there is a substantial offering of green infrastructure here, um, for stormwater retention, um, green roof, um, and, uh, vegetation on the sidewalk, um, improving the, uh, city right-of-way. Um, I, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna, um, belabor too much more of that because, uh, Sam really did a good job a- addressing a lot of the positive criteria here. Um, the, the density ultimately though, um, staff believes can be, uh, approved because it is within, uh, a little over a half a mile walking distance to the pass station. Um, it's a five-minute bike ride, um, from transit nodes. You got city bike stations there. Um, but also, um, incredibly, there's almost a one-to-one parking ratio, um, which I, um, you know, I, I think is a little high, actually. Um, you know, you're making more expensive units when you are, uh, offering cars up with all of them. So, um, that's certainly an amenity. Um, but as you can see on the very same block, you have a building with the same unit count virtually with no parking, and it's functioning within this space. Um, as far as, uh, the public comments go regarding, um, the zone and, you know, why, why has, uh, the R one not been adhered to stringently in this area? Um, well, um, firstly, the, the master plan does contemplate, um, this area, as Mr. Bellamy mentioned, um, for greater density. Um, and the, uh, the site does have, um, a few things going for it that are, uh, special as far as what we would use to consider for areas that would get a boost of density. And that is, again, it's a larger lot, um, it's on the corner, and it's near a major transit node. Um, but, um, you know, I, uh, I, I don't have more to add really because, um, the questions that I left open in my staff report were, uh, addressed by, um, Mr. Bellamy. And, um, I'm just gonna ask that, uh, the applicant's attorney, um, agreed to the planning staff memo posted on the data portal. And I know it's a little tricky, but I dated the memo July sixth of this year, but then the PDF file is saved as, uh, September twenty-first of this year. So, um, I guess we could just go with July sixth, twenty-twenty-three, uh, staff memo. Uh, Mr. Wine, are those conditions acceptable? But also, actually, I'm sorry. Um, there was a mention from, uh, the member of the public representing Sergeant Anthony. Would you be able to recess that glass facade on the corner of Beacon and Oakland as an eleventh condition? Um, I, I don't know how much your architect would be able to do that, maybe by like a foot. I'm not sure. Um.
Yeah, I'll, uh, so Cam, with respect to your first question, uh, can we agree to your staff report? Assuming it has not changed since the one you shared with me earlier today, then yes, I have no, no issue. Of course, we can comply. Um, and I'll turn it back over to answer about recessing it. Um, yeah, I think Rob will be best to answer that question.
Uh, just so I understand it correctly, the, the goal of recessing it is just to provide a little bit more space, uh, for the sidewalk at the corner there?
Yeah, that, that was the comment.
Yeah, I think we, uh, definitely can bring it back some, uh, to provide more space. Um, it's not a large space to be, you know, in, the interior of the lounge isn't large, but I, I do believe we have some room where we can recess it, uh, to provide some more space, uh, on the sidewalk.
Um, it's a little unconventional, but, um, if the chair doesn't mind, would we perhaps be able to promote the, uh, Sergeant Anthony member again? They are raising their hand.
Francisco?
Okay, promoting.
Okay, already came.
Sorry, I, I dressed down a little bit. Um, in the meantime, I, I should have been more clear. I think the conversation was about, about a foot recess, not much, just to maybe get a little bit of greenery or some relief at that corner, just because of that, um, the device that controls the traffic signals. That's really what it was. So not, not a lot, just like a little bit.
All right. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Uh, that concludes, uh, well, uh, planning staff, um, has, uh, will be recommending approval, um, with conditions. Um, they have been able to show, uh, within a reasonable doubt that this will not have a negative impact on the public's general health, welfare, well-being, nor will it have any detriment to the zone plan or the master plan. And, uh, yes, so planning staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Wine, no more question?
You're good? Yeah, I'm, I'm good. I just thank the board for their time and would ask that you approve the application as presented.
Okay, with that said, may I have a motion?
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve KZ twenty-two dash zero five eight as presented to the board this evening.
Yeah, I have a second.
I second.
Second.
Patel, Mr. Varish, Patel, second. Okay, so can I have, Francisco, may I have a roll call?
Uh, on the motion to approve, Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner's Ablicky?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner?
I'm sorry, who did you just call?
You didn't call anybody. Commissioner Brown?
They're losing you.
Yeah, Brown.
You. Commissioner Blue, can you guys hear me?
No, you're going in and out a little. I, I left off with, uh, Commissioner Shadid, yes, Commissioner Brown. I didn't get an answer.
Brown is yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, and Vice Chair Aruyu?
Yes, by the way, I love that design. That was, that's beautiful. And I think it's really gonna add a lot to that corner, and so I definitely say yes.
I agree.
All in favor?
Thank you, everybody. Have a, oh, uh, I guess I should stay on to adjourn my other cases. Would that be?
You don't have to stay on for that. We'll adjourn them for you.
Yeah, for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Take care.
So, um, Commissioner Shadid, you you wanted, did not want to go past ten, but it's past ten.
Yes, please, because this is the
You have to leave.
Yeah, and this one is a, that that twelve and thirteen is a big one, and I know we're probably gonna get a lot of public out, outpour, so.
All right, so.
Next meeting.
So, uh, well, let's formally carry everything.
Okay.
And but I, by the way, this is a special meeting where we, we had a meeting last week and, I mean.
Yes, don't worry.
Can I do this every week? It's not really fair for us. I understand there is a lot of people waiting on the uh, on the other side of the Zoom, and I really apologize to them. Um, but we announced that from the beginning and uh, uh, and I, I I'll send my apology to everyone waiting there. But we also have the
Francisco, uh, November ninth is the next meeting date?
That's correct, yes.
So, so we're gonna carry case twelve and thirteen, which is Z twenty and uh, Z twenty dash zero one nine and Z twenty dash zero two zero. That's uh the case for sixty-four, sixty-eight Harmon Street and four thirteen, four nineteen Arlington Avenue. We'll carry those to November nineteenth with the preservation of their notices. The same with case number fifteen, which is Z twenty-two dash zero eight nine, which is one twenty-eight Glenwood Avenue. We're gonna carry that as well to November ninth with a preservation of notice. And also case Z twenty-three dash zero twenty-five, that's one ninety-four Freeman Avenue. We'll carry that as well to November ninth with a preservation of notice.
So, excuse me, Finn, you said, you said November nineteenth for the uh case Z twenty, zero nineteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant the night.
I know that.
I meant the night.
Just change it for the record.
Yes, so what, which one was that that I mess up on?
The um Seventeenth, we already did, didn't we?
The Harmon Street.
Oh, the Harmon Street, now case number twelve, Z twenty dash zero one nine, and case number thirteen, zero, Z twenty dash zero two zero. Sixty-four, sixty-eight Harmon Street and four thirteen, four nineteen Arlington Avenue is carried to the November ninth meeting with a preservation of notices. Sorry about that.
Yeah, can we make sure we, the cases we moved from tonight to be uh presented first?
Yeah, the first one's heard.
Well, we moved a lot of them to the
Nine cases.
Yeah, so all those should be moved in in that order, yeah.
Yes, okay.
So we just have a few uh resolutions to memorialize and then uh, that would be it.
Okay.
So the first is uh case Z twenty-three dash zero zero four. That's sixty-eight Oakland Development LLC. Uh, preliminary and final major site plan approval with C and D variances for sixty-four dash seventy Oakland Avenue and seventy-seven Fleet Street. That was heard September seventh of this year. And present that evening were Acting Chairwoman Coyle, Commissioners Donley, Zablicky, Boyle, Park, Patel, and Shadid. That case uh was approved, seven in favor, none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that.
Hi.
And uh, Mr. Harrington is always, uh, you know, on the ball. So he has presented a um resolution for the case we heard tonight of D one dash eighty-three Hutton Street. The preliminary and final mi- major site plan approval with a D variance for eighty-one, eighty-three Hutton Street. That case is Z twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 seven. That passed tonight, seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Hi. Hi.
And and just to address you, uh, Francisco, for a moment, uh, the, the, the resolution that I drafted for James Cornell, which is Z twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 five one forty-four Erie Street, a C variance that we heard on August twenty-fourth and we memorialized September twenty-first. I had uh referred to the case as with the old doc at Z twenty-three, not zero twenty twenty-three. Uh, that's just a ministerial thing. We don't really have to memorialize this again. I'll just have my secretary uh resubmit that to you with the correct document number. And as far as I can see, that concludes the evening.
Benny, before we we close, if I'm not mistaken, you may, you mentioned the uh C twenty-three zero twenty-five as for, for next, for next, for November, didn't we, we, we heard that one? That was a C variance. That was really something that we we did from the very beginning.
What did I just do?
Yeah, I think I put that for eleven, uh, for next meeting, but that was something that we heard.
No, wait, which?
Didn't hear it?
No, that's case number seventeen on our agenda. We didn't hear, we didn't hear that.
Variants, because we didn't, we didn't need the nor.
Yeah, but we didn't hear it for some reason.
Because he, he didn't have his witness, Mr. Wine.
They couldn't get in touch with him.
Ah, you're right, okay, all right, I thought we had.
He was supposed to come back with us.
Variance, and I think we were just waiting, you know, we didn't need more at that time. Okay, not a problem. Okay, with that, we conclude the meeting.
So we think of a motion to
Make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, so, uh, Francisco, before we start chit-chatting, you wanna close the public?
Yeah, give me a second.
Mm-hmm. Wish there was a way to just remove all. You mean wipe us all out at once?
You could just, Francisco, that's old with.
Get rid of everybody.
Lucas. Ay, ay, ay. Three more. Okay, we're good. That's it? Yeah, that was a lot. Yes, there's eleven of us. Okay, so then that's it for the evening, right?
Yeah.
It looks like November ninth is going to be another heavy night, right? Did we adjourn?
We did.
We did adjourn, yes.